The time now is six P M. I call this regular meeting of the Uvalde Consolidated Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five, five, one. If you'll please stand and bow your heads with me for a moment of silence for twenty-one seconds to honor our twenty-one beautiful souls. Thank you.
Madam President, we would like to also recognize the birthday today.
Thank you, Ms. Flatus. I'd like to recognize Ms. Zaya Garcia. His birthday would have been August the thirteenth. Happy heavenly birthday.
Our invocation will be led by Kathleen Maxwell Ramby.
Father God, we just come to you tonight and we just offer up this meeting to you. I thank you that your word tells us in Psalms forty-six that you are our refuge and our strength, a very present help in time of trouble. And so, Lord, I just pray your peace over this meeting. I thank you for your strength, Lord, and your love for us. I pray for this meeting and for this community, God, that you would heal the shattered hearts and broken dreams. Lord, pour out your healing throughout our community. And we do lift up Curville and the tragedy there, too. God, I ask that you be so present and that your Holy Spirit, the great Comforter, would surround all of those that have lost friends, family, property. Lord, bring your peace to this meeting. Bring understanding of one another's perspectives. And I pray that you would be glorified and honored. In Jesus's name, amen.
Now, if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Item number two, swearing in of at-large school member.
And by the authority of the State of Texas.
Name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
I, Eric, the New York.
I, Eric, the New York.
The San Antonio.
I, Eric, the New York.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of the office of.
Execute the duties of the office of.
UCI, each school will trustee.
UCI, excuse me, school trustee.
The state of Texas, my best of my ability, preserve, protect, defend, constitution and its laws.
The state of Texas.
And with the best, work with the best of my belief, preserve, protect and defend.
With the best of my ability, preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and the law.
The Constitution and the law of the United States.
And of the state, under this state.
This state.
So, I don't care.
Oh, okay.
I, Eric.
I, Eric.
I, Eric, the New York.
I, Eric, the New York.
The San Antonio.
The San Antonio.
That I have not.
That I have not.
Directly.
Directly.
Or indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Pay, offer.
Or offer.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed, or promised to contribute. Any money.
Contributed, or promised to pay. Contributing money.
Or anything to value.
Or anything to value.
Or promise, any public promise.
Or promise, any public.
For employment.
For employment.
For the giving.
The giving.
Always loving. Of the token of hope.
Of the token of hope.
At the election.
At the election.
If we're.
If.
So, the election.
As a matter of fact.
Or as a reward, to serve.
As a reward, to serve.
My friend, the information.
I have my information.
Whichever the case may be.
A charity agency.
So, I don't care. Trustee, you.
Jesus.
On your good side. I'm going to give you the version. Okay. Thank you. Okay, item agenda number three, reorganization of board officers. Item A, election of board president.
Madam President, I make the motion for Laura Bettis to serve as our president.
Second.
Just second.
Anyone else? Motion made by trustee Swadis, second by trustee Gonzalez. All in favor? Hi. Vote passes unanimously. Item Agenda B, election of vice president.
Madam President, I recommend trustee Gonzalez as vice president of the board.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Do you have any other nominations for vice president?
Trustee J.J. Swadis.
Do I have a second? I'll second. So, motion made by trustee Flatus, second by trustee Bettis. May I show a hand of support for vice president?
One more real quick. Yeah, I need to do the motion for Jacqueline by Robert. And then second by Jesse.
I did.
Oh, did you say that?
Yeah, I did say that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't write it, I didn't write it down, so.
You call me Spanish, then I'm.
Okay, motion for Jacqueline Gonzalez made by trustee Quinones, second by trustee Riso. And I show a hands for trustee Gonzalez as vice president. And motion made for Mr. J.J. Swadis as vice president, motion made by trustee Flatus, second by Bettis. All in favor? Is it time? One, two, three, four. Okay. J.J. Swadis will serve as the vice president. Item C, election of secretary.
Nominate Jesse Riso as secretary.
And I'll second. Any other nominations? Secretary nomination made by trustee Flatus, nominated by trustee, second by trustee Bettis. All in favor? Mr. Riso stands as board secretary.
Good job.
Do we need to do machine?
Just.
And Marie? Yes, we're ready.
So, do we need to move anyone? Yeah.
Yeah. Jesse. You have to. You have to move. There goes. Okay.
Are you sitting there?
Yes, you have to sit back right. Item Agenda number four, board recognition. Mrs. Colas?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Anne Maria Espinoza to the podium for board recognition.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Mrs. Colas. Board recognition is going to look a little different this evening. This evening, we are recognizing our founders and funders of Motivate Our Students Texas as this past school year was our inaugural year of implementing. In the twenty-twenty-five, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five school year, most facilitated fifty-five-zero learning expeditions for students who earned perfect attendance or at the beginning, our first SeaWorld trip was students who had three or less absences and tardies. We visited various locations and learned a great deal about the different opportunities of careers and the importance of attending school every day. Within these fifty expeditions, we had nearly six thousand students attend the different expeditions. We share extreme gratitude to the founder and funder of Dr. Edwin Eli Whitney. He is the one who founded Motivate Our Students Texas and secures all the funding as far as admission into all the different, different parts, travel, the cover of the school bus, the cover of the gas, and paying of the bus drivers. This costs the district zero dollars, absolutely none. Helping him organize the expeditions is Mr. Bruce Baker, who is our connection with all of the different sites that we go to visit. And Dan Eason, many of you may know Dan Eason. He is a Uvallian. He is the one who made the connection with Dr. Edwin Eli Whitney and our school district and brought Motivate Our Students Texas to Uvalde C I S D. So, if you ever see Dan, you thank him because he is our connection. Without him, we wouldn't have made this great connection. Now, I'd like to share with you just a glimpse of the different places we took our students and all of the wonderful experiences they had. Mario Rodriguez put that great piece of video together for us, just capturing little glimpse of last year. And you could see by the smiles on our student faces after every trip and on the bus ride back, lots of thank yous, lots of I've never been here before, ma'am. We just had a wonderful time. And I call it our inaugural year, our pilot year, because really, our kids didn't really know, right? What am I trying to work for? What do you mean going to the Ox Ranch? What do you mean to the zoo, right? And so, this year was just so impactful in creating those memories and creating those experiences, creating little P R students to go back into the classrooms and share with their students why attending school. First of all, it's so important for our education, but also to be able to attend these learning expeditions. We learned a lot, a lot this past year. It was fast and furious. And so, we are going to be making changes this year. While this is going to be year two, across the district, we will have challenge dates. So, our dates, our perfect attendance challenges will run in six-week increments, which will be so much easier in reporting and gathering that information. And another thing we learned was that our challenges needed to be the same across the district for families that have students in different schools. We had every elementary on a different perfect attendance challenge last year, just trying to get the most out of all of the places we could go to. But this year, they will follow six weeks. They will be concurrent. So, you'll notice the first six weeks challenge is going to start on the first day of school because we're going to start releasing this information tomorrow with the district registration, building awareness of the, of the challenges. But it'll end September the twelfth on a Friday. And then the second six weeks challenge will start that very next Monday. So, the idea here is during the second six weeks challenge, we will be taking the learning expeditions for those students who qualified. And for those who didn't, they'll already be earning an opportunity to go on the second six weeks. There will be no gaps this year. And that was one of the very big things that we learned this past year. In addition to that, we have a new academic calendar that has one hundred and sixty-five instructional days, which means we will be safeguarding instructional time. All learning expeditions, if you look at those dates, are happening on the Fridays where our staff has professional development and our students are off, giving them something to do. That will also be taking place on Saturdays and on days that our school district is closed. Okay, so looking at this, every six weeks, we will have four learning expeditions, and none of those dates will interfere with instructional time. They will all be on Fridays, Saturdays, and there's a few Mondays and Fridays where our district is closed. But we are utilizing all our, all of our off time. What we've done is worked really hard to schedule the first six, the first two six weeks and made reservations so that our students know what they're working for. And we have sectioned them off by grade level. We've done by pre-K through second grade, which will be working for a magician show. Third through fifth, we'll go to the San Antonio Aquarium. Sixth through eighth, the San Antonio Botanical Gardens. And ninth through twelve, we're going to take them to Natural Bridge Caverns. And the beauty of not having these trips on instructional days is we don't have to rush back to get the buses back into, into the district for dismissal time, which is what was happening last year. Whatever trip we took, we had to leave by one, leave San Antonio to get back here by three o'clock so that our buses were back at our campuses for dismissal time. We have plenty of buses. We just don't have plenty of drivers, right? So, having learning expeditions on days where we don't have school, we now have a field trip for bus drivers who would be off, and we have the luxury of time. So, we are looking forward. All of these locations have been reserved as well as for the second six weeks. We'll be taking pre-K through second on October thirty-first to the Corn Maze, third through fifth to the Duseum, sixth through eighth to the Texas Transportation Museum, and ninth through twelve to the Lackland Air Force Base. That Lackland Air Force Base Point of Contact is super excited and is going to just take our kids, our, our high school kids, to different hangars, different parts of the Air Force Base. So, we are just thrilled to have our first two six weeks fully planned, reservations secured. It's no small feat, so we're still working on the rest of the school year. But what we've also learned is we needed some structure. So, every learning expedition will have a school nurse just to tend to our students. We will have a white fleet following every, for every learning expedition driven by a bus driver. We will have campus points of contact to help with communications, logistics, and promotional, promotional efforts. And we will also have a teacher and staff coordination to help ensure that information is delivered to our students. We'll be using all of our learning management platforms, Canvas and CSO to make sure our parents get the information. We'll be using mass communication to communicate directly with parents so they're aware of all of the learning expeditions, the perfect attendance challenges, and just really building a great awareness of what's coming up next. So, with that, our first six weeks challenge is going to start with the first day of school because beginning tomorrow, we will begin to release all this information to our parents and our students. Please know that we have taken great consideration. If there's a bad weather day and we have some flooding or something like that, we will just take that date right out of the challenge. But we will manage that on our end, so we don't have to burden our families with that. It is perfect attendance challenge, which means attending school every day. There are some exceptions for extracurricular. There's exceptions for families that take their children to school in the morning and have to pull out maybe for a dentist appointment, but they get back to school and they finish the day. Those will be looked at as well as any kind of court cases or places that students have to miss, right? Those would be the only exceptions. Other than that, it's a perfect attendance challenge, which means attending school every day. Dr. Whitney is committed to our school district in supporting us as much as he can to help us increase our attendance rate because that increases dollars into our district. And most importantly, it increases our knowledge, our instructional time with our students, which is going to be so very important this year with only one hundred and sixty-five days of instructional time.
Anne Marie, thank you. I just want to say whoever, I know it was probably more than one person that came up with those dates because I think that we saw like a drop in attendance when there was a, a field trip planned and maybe kids weren't going, so they're like, well, we're not going to school. And so, I mean, that, that was great, those dates that don't, aren't going to conflict with school. And also, just to hear parents say, you know, I could never afford to take my child here or there. And they were so excited that they got to take that field trip.
Yes, we, you're very welcome. We learned so much the first year. We were literally flying the plane as we were building it. So, this year, we took all of those experiences and we said, we're going to fix a few things, right? And so, now our, our challenges run concurrently, and we figured out which exceptions we can make. But ultimately, it's to provide wonderful learning expeditions to our students that they may never get to go. And if they have, well, it's a great experience for them to go because when we're greeted, we're greeted by representatives of the agency or the organization, and they're telling us what they did to go to school, what career paths they've taken. They really embrace the opportunity to share with the students all their education and what they did to get there, how to become a zookeeper or how to work at SAM SATS. So, our kids are learning behind-the-scenes aspects as well. So, thank you for letting me do this as well because it's been a, a labor of love. It truly has, right? well, because it's been a labor of love. It truly has, right? This is not an easy feat by any means, but to see the smiles on our students' faces, it fills my heart. It truly does. So thank you, Board of Trustees, for allowing us to do this for year two.
And thank you to Dr. Whitney for funding it. And Anne Marie, thank you so much for taking on the challenge of organizing it all and making it all happen, because it, when she says it was no small feat, it was no small feat. I was a very labor intensive, and she did not have a lot of help in the beginning. And then we started to learn what was necessary to pull it all off. And so we've gotten her some help now. And I'm very pleased with the plan going forward. So thank you for that.
Oh, you're very welcome, Mrs. Colas. And thank you for reminding me, Dr. Whitney did see, he's like, is this for the entire district? I said, oh, yes, sir. We're not leaving not one of our schools out. We're not leaving one of our grade levels out. So when we took our first group to SeaWorld, he could not imagine, he was so surprised about the amount of students we took. He says, you need help. You need help. So he also covers the substitute daily rate to have two ladies come in and help me with all the organization with calling these org, these places and making the reservations. When I say Dr. Whitney covers the entire bill, he truly does. This is at no cost to the district to provide our students wonderful experiences for coming to school every day. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, open forum. We welcome your comments on items not listed on the agenda. The audience and patrons portion of the meeting is limited to three minutes per person and will last up to 15 minutes total. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views to the board. Keep your comments in a positive nature. Please do not expect board discussion of items raised during the open forum at this meeting that are not on the agenda posted for this meeting. If comments made during the course of the public forum warrant further information, we will direct the superintendent to gather information for consideration at a later date. Our first speaker is Mr. Ronald Garza on appellate court ruling.
Good afternoon, Ms. Colas, school board members. I think we're all aware of the most recent ruling by the appellate court regarding the lawsuit involving UC ISD and Uvalde County regards with regards to the school district and the county handing over all video coverage, all emails, notes, etc., to the media. I consider this a victory. This is just my opinion for the families, for the parents, for those beautiful children, and there's two wonderful teachers. For too long, these parents and families have been kept in the dark. And for too long, the district attorney's office continues to have our go to line as we can't talk about this, we can't show this, because it's going to compromise the criminal case pending here at our 38 judicial court district. I am one of four Uvalde County Commissioners, and I'm not here by no means speaking on behalf of Commissioner's Court, but I know where I stand on this matter. For too long, this has been going on. These attorneys representing UC ISD and Uvalde County ultimately work for the taxpayers. And the more this goes on, the more expense the taxpayers are incurring. So I'm asking, I'm pleading with the board here tonight to drop the appeal, hand over video coverage, hand it over. And again, I'm not speaking here for Commissioner's Court, but I'm doing all I can to follow suit. So thank you for your time. God bless you. Have a good rest of the evening.
Our second speaker is Mrs. Gloria Casades on Rob Records.
Hi. My name is Gloria Casades, Jackie's mom. I'm here today to say that I fully support the release of UC ISD records from May 24. For over three years, families like mine have lived with unbearable pain, unanswered questions, and a silence that feels like yet another betrayal. It took that day forever changed our lives. It took from us what we can never get back, our children and our sense of safety. It's about making sure what happened to my daughter never happens to another child. I'm here today to ask, no, no, I'm here today to demand the truth. You all owe it to Jackie, to her classmates, to her teachers, and to every single family member that has forever been changed.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Simon Ortiz, Agenda Item 7C.
Superintendent Colas, trustees, thank you for this time. First, I'd like to say, well said, Commissioner Garza, well said, Mrs. Casades. I'm here to talk about the personnel matters that you're going to discuss in closed session and then take action when you get back in here. These, I hope these actions take into account the discussion we had, y'all had last week about the revenues and how, how drastic the projections are, and how they could not or might not be as bad. Last year, UC ISD was facing a $2 million to $2.7 million deficit from the projections made in that budget at this juncture last year. And towards the end of the year, we came out almost, if not balanced with a with a small deficit. This year, your deficit is something like $400, $700,000. But that is with a dire revenue projection, prediction, that some of your trustees and some of the folks in the audience thought was too low. Please, please, take into account these projections that were made that are that are so low. And you agreed that it should have been higher. And if you take into account these, these projections, why not take those same projections to into account when you make these cuts back there? I hope you have made those those adjustments in the cuts that you're going to make in the personnel, because these cuts will affect the morale, these cuts will affect the quality of education. Now, I say cuts, but I'm talking about your personnel matters. And this will also affect employee retention. Last week, it was said that if you didn't make these, these, if you sign contracts with these teachers, that it would be irreversible. Well, we think that if you do make these cuts, it will have a irreversible effect in morale, in quality of education, and retention of teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mrs. Berlinda Ariola, discussion on Rob Records.
Good evening, Superintendent, Miss Peters, Board Trustees. Here we go again with another episode of Will You Do the Right Thing? For 38 months, there are three things that we have asked for: transparency, accountability, and to be able to have our loved ones back in our lives and in our homes. As we all know, the latter is impossible, but the other two can definitely still happen. It is time for UC ISD to stop fighting the release of records. There's nothing in those records and those files that can hurt any one of us any more than the pain that we've already endured. Once released, there will be questions. Transparency will come. There may be some blame. Accountability will come. I'm here to ask that you do not drag this out any longer, and that you not file another appeal, and let's get this out on the table, get it out in the open. Because let's face it, if it were your child or your grandchild, you would want to know the truth about everything. Trust starts with you. And those who say, those of those that always say that we should move on and get over it, it's issues like this that won't allow us. And this is why we're not done. Thank you.
Thank you. Item Agenda number six, a closed session. A closed session will be held under provisions of Texas Government Code, Chapter 55.1.071 and 551.074. A pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, Attorney Consultation Regarding Prior Litigation, DOJ, Mideles versus UC ISD Civil Action, DR-77-CA-20 Consent Decree Compliance. Item Agenda B, pursuant to Section 55.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with the District's Attorney concerning legal issues related to pending litigation in the matter styled Texas Tribune, Et Al versus Uvalde Consolidated Independent School District, Et Al, case number 2022-08-34516-CB, in the 38th Judicial Court, Judicial District of Texas, Uvalde County, Texas, on Appeal in the Fourth Court of Appeals in the State of Texas. Item Agenda C, Deliberation Concerning Approval of Personnel, Employments, Assignments, Suspensions, and Terminations. The time now is 6:38. The time now is 6:38.
The time now is 7:28. Item B, consider and take possible action regarding pending litigation in the matter, styled Texas Tribune at L versus Uvalde Consolidated Independent School District at L, case number 2022-08-34516-CB, in the 38th Judicial District of Texas, Uvalde County, Texas, on appeal in the Fourth Court of Appeals in the State of Texas. I make a motion that we move that the school district release the responsive information to the media entities who filed suit against the district in compliance with the court order and direct the administration to provide prior notice to the families and the community of the release date.
Second.
Motion made. Trustee Bettis, second by trustee Swaddes. Any discussion?
There's nothing I can say or we can say that can go fix anything of this, but I do hope that we can at least open that door where we can start that building of trust again, having that transparency and, you know, you have a committed board up here and we're trying to do the right thing and this is the step in that right direction where we need to get back on track where the community can trust us and we can get back to where we used to be.
I agree. It's important for us to really see information. We want to respect the community and know that we will inform you before it's released and you will know before it's released to the media outlets. I think it's important that you know that it's why I sit up here as a school board member. It's why I do this. It's for you and the community so that we can have healing and transparency. So I want y'all to know that and I thank y'all for coming today. I know that y'all have been through a lot of trials and battles. I'm sorry we didn't release it sooner. I just, coming on as a new board member, I don't know if I understood everything and so we're coming to understand more and I believe that it's important to be transparent in choices that we make and do things better, get things right in this district.
Thank you for being here and yes, I do agree that we should release this information, be transparent and then start gaining the trust from the public. And I ask Bob, you if you see anything wrong with the district, point it out because if we don't hear about it, you know, some of us don't know about it because we're not, can't be at every campus, you know, and of course, you know, you can always reach out to, communication is one of the most important things that will make this district successful. You know, we communicate with the teachers, the principals, the board members, the superintendent, you know, don't wait until it's too late. And I'm sorry that it took this long to release that information.
Thank you. In preparing for today, you know, it took a lot of things into consideration, am I creating or causing more harm than good? And that weighed a lot. You know, there's another aspect of that and that is the money aspect, right? I mean, you spend money, spend money. That's not as important, obviously, but it always went back to the question, am I creating more harm than good? And I knew that I couldn't do this on my own. I had to reach out to people and I reached out to many people. A lot of the families, they opened up to me. A lot of the survivors opened up to me. Teachers opened up, just people that I would run into. Of course, I never divulged any information that was in these documents and it was a lot of documents. And reading them will take you right back to that day and I'm sorry that you're going to have to go through that one day, but I'm also hopeful that some of the questions that you have, that you're going to get some of the answers. Will it answer everything? No. Will it give you closure? I don't think anything ever will give you that type of closure. Will it hopefully make you heal or allow you to heal? I pray that it does. It's been weighing and like Jackie said, you know, for a whole year, did I make the right decision on my initial appeal? I can look back and it's always easy to look back and say, we could have done things differently, but we are here today and the outcome is favorable. I asked several moms, parents, grandmas. One teacher that I'll share with you, you know, when I asked her and I didn't know who she was. I just happened to be working at her house and I asked her and she turned and she looked at the wall and she took me right back to May 24th and I could see her eyes looking at the wall and she described where she was, everything in detail, and then she came right back to me and I asked her, I go, what is it that you want me to do? And she says, I want you to release it. And I go, why is that? And she tells me, it's because you asked me to trust you as a school district. You sit on that board, all y'all sit on that board and you ask me, but if you hide and you hold this information, how can I ever trust you? It all made all the sense. I asked, you know, there's just so many quotes and I don't want to read them all because it's painful to hear. A lot of them, you know, I would hang up with y'all and I mean, like inhuman would, you cry, you know, what can you do? One person told me, she was, you can't give me my child back. The least that you can do is give me this information. One person said, the longer that you hold on to this information, you're killing me. You're slowly, you're torturing me. And the stories are like that. The survivors, the same thing. I don't know what to do and what to say except for hold you, hug you and tell you that I love you because you will have to live with this for the rest of your life. The nightmare, it never ends. Those that lost somebody, I know there's a vacancy. I know Christmas is not the same anymore. Thanksgiving doesn't exist. You go to the river, you miss them. What I can do is try to make things right. What I can do is apologize to you and tell you that I'm sorry. I'm sorry that it took so long. I'm sorry that we failed you. If there's something that we can learn from this, it's how to be better, how to make things right. We pray that it never happens. We already know that it's happened since May 24th. You know, I hope that other districts will learn from this, other colleges will learn from this. If it ever happens, God forbid it does, but if it ever happens, that they take note how we failed. But also most importantly is how do we make things right? Did we struggle in making things right? We will continue to struggle, but we have to reflect and allow God to guide us in the right direction and to embrace you. And with that, I tell you one more time that I love y'all so very much and I wish that I could take an ounce of that pain away from me.
I think that, you know, it didn't take long to come to this decision and I think that I wish we had the opportunity to do it sooner. And I know that we can't take back what everyone has lost that day, but we will try to do better. We'll do better for all of you, for our district and let you know that we hear you, we feel you and we're trying. And talking to different families, the one thing that just over and over was, you can't give me my child back, but you can try to give me closure. So I hope that in today, you have some bit of answer to maybe questions you never had answered, thoughts that you thought about that were never clear to you. I just know that in releasing this, we are not, the hope is that it doesn't hurt you anymore than it already has, right? But I believe that you should have this information. I believe it belongs to you.
You know, in talking with trustee Rizzo and hearing him, I echo a lot of the stuff that he says. I look at all of you, all the families there. Prior to May 24th, we were, we're all friends. We all talked, we all laughed together. This is something that doesn't come with a handbook, doesn't come with a step-by-step procedure on what to do. Every day, every board meeting, whether it be a regular meeting, a special meeting, I'm praying, I'm praying that I get the right answers to do the right thing. When I decided to run for the school board, it was prior to May 24th and I didn't know what to expect and nothing prepared me for this. Our community, I hope we can start our healing process, continue our healing process. And all I can say is that I will continue to do the best thing that I need to do for our community and I'm an open book. If you call me and talk to me, many of you have called me, have called me one-on-one and I'll talk to you. I've never not answered a call. I just pray that this information that will be released will, will help you in the healing process. And I just thank y'all for being here and speaking on this.
Hi, I'm Erica Munyos and I ran for school board in the most tough time after May 24th and I followed everything. I've seen the hurting. I've seen the families and the moms and the dads and, you know, I go back to that day and I think to myself, I still see my kid's shoes there and I think, you know, these moms are not going to see their kids again. And it's always so hurtful and it just, it's always been this over me, but I felt that, you know, y'all are, y'all deserve to know what happened. You know, we need to be transparent. We need to give y'all that information so that y'all can find that, that way to heal and to, to feel like, you know, there's nothing that we're hiding and that's the worst is to know or to think that, you know, what are they hiding from us? Why, why are they not releasing this to us? So I'm glad that I'm here to be a part of that and to, to help, you know, transform your views of us, of the school board and that we're here for you guys and to reach out to us if you need anything. You know, we feel for you guys and we hope that by doing this, it will help you find that trust again in us. Thank you.
Another discussion. All in favor? Passes unanimously. There you go. The board will now go into closed session for item A pursuant to Texas government code 551.071, Attorney Consultation Regarding Prior Litigation, DOJ Medelas versus UCISD Civil Action, number DR-77-CA-20 Consent Decree Compliance, C Deliberation Concerning Approval of Personal Employments, Assignments and Suspensions and Terminations. The time now is 7:43.
Time now is eight fifty-three. We have reconvened from closed session for action relevant to items covered during closed session and other items listed. Item A, consider and take possible action regarding legal matters discussed in closed session related to prior litigation concerning DOJ/Medellis versus UCISD Civil Action Number DR-77-CA-20 Consent Decree Compliance.
Madam President, we had a briefing. We just want to let the community know that we had a briefing with our legal counsel on the new elections legislation that just came out in last month. Our plan is to go to the court to have, seek to have the consent decree amended. At this time, it is still our expectation to, that our next trustee election will be made of 2026. We will continue to keep the community updated.
Item C, consider and take possible action concerning approval of personnel employments, assignments, suspensions, and terminations.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept all the personnel matters as discussed.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Swades, second by trustee Floris. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item eight, superintendent's report, Mrs. Colas.
Thank you, President Pettis. At this time, I would like to call up our fabulous curriculum and instruction team to present the PMS update.
Good evening Superintendent Colas and board members. There has been requests of kind of like the breakdown of PMS and what does it mean and how does it affect us? So our CNI team sat together and we grabbed some information to kind of break it down and do some comparisons from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. So if you have any specific questions as we go through here, we have our teams to answer those different department questions. We also have our wonderful PMS specialist, Ms. Lorena Flores. I know y'all have asked who's our PMS person? That is Ms. Lorena. She's our PMS person. And then her supervisor is Ms. Loretta Del Rempel and she's over accountability and data integrity for the district. So that is both ladies are here specifically for those PMS questions. But we asked what is PMS? Public Education Information Management System. Basically, it's the backbone. It is for not only our funding, but it is compliance and accountability as well. It's basically what we submit for each student, each teacher. It's bigger than just the attendance. It's, there's so many pieces to it. So of course, we look at our funding pieces. Why? How does it drive our funding? It is through ADA. We also have weighted ADA for special populations. And I think that one pager that you'll have kind of tells you in regards to the multipliers of that one pager of our weighted ADA. Now, it does not have the current changes for twenty-four, twenty-five. That was updated in January, but that is the last one that's on TEA's website. So we are waiting for the updates to come to us. But I have given you the most updated from TEA right now, so we will update that as we get it. Some of our weighted ADAs for special populations, like our special education, our emergent bilinguals, our pregnancy-related services, CTE. Any of our programs, they have a certain weight to them. We also have program participation codes, which also generate different types of funding to include 504, GT, dual credit. All of those do also generate different funding. We have our accountability metrics. We look at sub pops, our domain threes. We also have our domain fours, which is our CTE, our graduation, and our endorsements. All of that is directly tied to PMS, which also affects our accountability in our domains three and fours. Basically, incorrect PMS codes is our loss of funding and the non-compliance when we're, those needs improvement and have to build our specific plans for that. So some of our key indicators and some of our driving forces for special education is our weighted full-time equivalent. So what that is looking at is in the classroom minutes. So for an example, if a kid gets pulled out early and they don't go to that co-teacher resource classes, we don't get funded for that kid at those times. Pregnancy-related services, it's only the minutes that are served. So it's not only they are present for the day, but are they present for that program in that minute? That is where some of these fall to include our EB students. We have two types of EB. We have our ESL, which we have them at all campuses, Dalton, Uvalde Elementary, which is now Legacy. And then we have our dual language, which is our UDLA, our Morales, and our Uvalde High School. So these are some of our impact funding. We have our CTE. We have the courses, different courses, wait and get paid for different. Different courses get paid different, with the student enrollment. Sorry, I got stuck there for a second. And our pregnancy-related services, again, that's based on minutes, based on actual, are they pregnant at the time? And then our IBCs, which is our industry-based certification, do they earn them? That mainly impacts our Perkins funding, not necessarily our weighted ADA, but we also look at our CCMR as well. So these are just some kind of causes and effects. If we're really proactive in our accurate funding, we get, we receive the money. So this is just kind of like, do we have our coding audits? We get good accountability rating. So our team just kind of identified some cause and effects of making sure that our PMS and our funding is right. So TEA from our first submission, and when was our first submission? October, they compared where we were from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. So based in what we have cleaned up a little bit along the way, these are some of the increases that we have seen due to the corrections between twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. And I'm going to break it down a little bit. I know y'all are looking at that graph. But like CTE tier one, we went through and looked at all of our tier one courses, which is like our principals courses, some of our CTE that are in those different tier ones, level ones and level twos. And we readjusted. We make sure they were in the program of study. Again, this has to do with the course code and what kids are in that seat at the time of that period. And so what we have done is we have regenerated after we readjusted some course IDs, some sections of where they're located. We have accumulated, based just in our first initial, fifty-six additional tier one full-time equivalent or minutes that kids are in seats. So that's on average about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just by making those PMS corrections with course codes. The second one that we really kind of honed in on is our pregnancy-related services. Now one increased a thousand three hundred, but that's just in projection of coding one student correctly and making sure that the minutes were served. And we had the documentation that somebody served those minutes and were able to give that to the PMS and code them as they needed. So that projected gain of one student was about seven thousand dollars. The other one that we were looking at is our EB. Ms. Pettis and our, has done a phenomenal job of going to every campus, doing EB audits, going into folders. And she has kind of reevaluated and working with our EBs again. This is also kids that transferred from UDLA to Uvalde Elementary, UDLA to Dalton. Sometimes their coding gets dropped. Or if they go to DAP and come back, sometimes the coding gets dropped. So Ms. Pettis and her team has been super honed in on withdrawals and entries. She has cleaned up about, I think it's about two hundred students, which is generating about another hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Again, there's a difference between the ESL, which goes to our Dalton legacy, and then our dual language, which goes to our UDLA Morales and the high school. Yes, sir.
So when they transfer from UDLA to Dalton now, will their coding be changed? Do we have systems in place now?
Yes, sir. So where we started last year, but we're really tightened since Ms. Pettis is on board and I'm no longer split between a bilingual director. Is that they will call because you really should have an LPAC, kind of like an ARD where that committee meets. And then we give, hand off the transfer to say these are the accommodations that they need. And the parent has to sign off and that's part of the committee. So she is working with the campuses to make sure those systems are in place. And then I know Miss Del Rempel has been fantastic with submitting to all of our program directors who enrolled.
Every day.
Every day.
Withdraw every instructional day and I'm sending that out to all of our program directors. So we're keeping eyes on those kids and ensuring that none of that coding was dropped.
So the next one we have is our special education. We particularly honed in on our early childhood support. And so this one increased because of, oh, Ms. Del Rempel will talk about special ed. She's way smarter than special ed than I am and I don't want to misspeak.
So we, I was able to visit with Sasha Rios, our Region Twenty Special Ed rep, and then Vanessa Moran, who's our Region Twenty Early Childhood Person. And they were able to share with us, there's a specific section of the Student Accountability Handbook where it specifically goes over both pre-K eligibilities as well as special education eligibilities. And so sometimes if our students don't meet eligibility for pre-K, they can still qualify for funding as an EE student. Based on how many minutes or what their instructional setting is for special education. And sometimes our students who do meet eligibility for half-day coding for pre-K, depending again on where they fall in that chart, if they're special education. They can also qualify for half-day coding as a special education student. So some of those kiddos, we could actually be getting full-day funding and we weren't getting any funding. Some of those kiddos, we weren't getting any funding and we could be getting a half-day funding. And so we're just tightening that up and making sure that we are getting all of the funding that we're eligible to receive.
And she has done a great job with working with special education department, pulling those numbers, looking at the comparisons. And with her special ed brain, she can look at patterns and say, hey, this isn't right. And then she'll get with our special ed department, which they're investigating to make sure that we are gathering the appropriate coatings. that we are gathering the appropriate coatings. All right. She didn't mean it negatively. You called it a special ed brain. Oh, no, it's actually a good thing because she, she has to.
She loves me, I promise.
Yes. No. Special ed brain as in she's good. I was like, she knows all the things about special ed. No, like Christie's got the EB brain, it's fine. Like we all have different brains on, so it's actually a good thing. It's like the expertise brain on there. Promise, it's all good. Okay, I was like, I don't have the special ed brain, let me get you somebody that does. It's fine, we love each other. Okay, so after, I promise, after our corrections, we're kind of gauging just on those top tier ones that we pulled from our comparisons. It was about, I think Pam Landstad, it was about 250, that's just cleaning up the corrections that we can. Now, there are some PMS corrections that can only be captured at Snapshot, which is the last day of October. And there are some things that we could not have updated this year that we are kind of making plans to update for this coming up year. But there are some things that we are not able to clean up after the fact and that's through the PMS and the submission rules.
Is that, what is this pregnancy-related services? What's that?
It's a, it's a high school student that is actively, actively carrying a child. They're only, it's only during the time that they carry the child and they are receiving services, so it's based in minutes. Yes. And so we are not able to like the dad or like after she, after the delivers the baby, we're not able to collect that funding, but we are able to collect the funding through the related services. So what is next? We also gave you a 20-page document that Loretta is kind of like, this is her personal timeline of what she has to do, all this submissions. Again, the PMS, it's by, some of the things are by minute, some of them are by day, some of them are by program. So it's not just enter the data and go, it constantly changes on top of it. So we gave you what we are doing on our side, all the submissions we have to submit and that's for this coming up year. So each of those submissions are also requiring different documentation, different programs. And so that's what we're working through to put on our timeline to make sure that we train on them and have the campuses comfortable in those submissions. So that's what we have our training plan as well. Our next big date is October, that last Friday, that is a funding deadline for a lot of our stuff is the snapshot date that we're not able to change. So that is one of the things that's already on our radar and we're starting to plan and train on that. And then ongoing Skyward audits and co-training like what Ms. Pettis did and everyone else is going to the campus, pulling random folders, looking at their certain departments. I know Ms. Jennifer Torres with CTE is constantly working for college prep with Dr. Guerrero. So we're just cross-training on a lot of this because a lot of it has multiple hands for one student. We're also looking at monthly data health checks across campuses through the entry and withdrawals. Where are they at DAP? Do they come over? Do they leave for homeschool and come back? So we're just constantly checking those as well. And then really identifying, because as we all know, you can't enter the data and validate the data. So we're trying to find clear roles of who enters the data, who collects the data to say, you enter this and who verifies it to make sure that it all says, it cannot be the same person. So we're making real clear guidelines on who does what and when is that supposed to be submitted.
Yeah, and that's all in your packet as well. So you guys have the submissions, the timeline, the data elements that are in each of those submissions, our plan for data responsibility, which she spoke to, our plans for training and then for just continually checking the validity of that data, right? But most importantly, getting it accurate when it first goes in. And so that Skyward training that we're doing with our registrars, with our administrators, with our counselors, we've done it all at CNI. We're contracting with Region 12, who specializes in Skyward SMS, which is our student information system. And so they're really also able to assist us in that piece by piece, data element by data element, a little bit more than Region 20, just because they specialize in Ascender, which is a different student information system. So we're just really trying to tap into all of the resources that we can, all of the experts that we can to ensure that everyone is trained and that our system is as good as it possibly can be.
Did y'all have any specific questions regarding program? Because I can put someone else on the spot like this.
How live is the data? Like how live is it? Can you pull a chart, I mean, pull a report today and give us a live, accurate information on that or?
Attendance, not so much because if somebody's absent, it takes time to put them in. Excuse versus non-excuse, that usually lags about six weeks with the states and the reports. Like we can pull it, but it's not as accurate.
Yeah. So TSDS, the PMS website, things are a little further behind. Like she spoke to this different submissions and snapshot dates. But Lorena knows a whole lot more about Skyward than I do and we're able to pull more accurate, up-to-date reports from Skyward than we can from TSDS. I was going to tell you guys also, since you talked about the timeliness, EDFI, the way that we're reporting that, all that information to the state was vastly overhauled this year. And so in previous years, and I may say this incorrectly because this is my first year being involved, but it was like they would take a snapshot, they would like extract the data from the information system and then they would be able to work in that extracted file. So it's frozen, if you will. They're able to work in that, validate it, make corrections that need to be made. And then when the time comes, submit that to the state as a clean whole file. With EDFI, the way that works, it's live every night, they're sending the information to the state. And so I spoke about it at Leadership Summit and I explained to our principals, it's like a puzzle that you're working on, on your dining room table and you've got, you know, half of this puzzle put together. And that night you go to bed and the next morning you wake up and somebody has removed half of your pieces or turned them sideways or replaced them with pieces from a completely different puzzle. And so the training piece is really important because that is constantly being reset and anyone who has access to data entry into our student information system, you know, positively or negatively can affect what's in that system. And so the team has done a really good job of, like we talked about at a previous meeting, pulling access, validating and cleaning up the data and then training out to ensure that once we release that back out, again, it's only going to selected people, but that they're well-trained to enter accurately. And then the data checks, the health checks that she was mentioning, that we're constantly again, checking that to ensure that it is staying clean and accurate.
Is there a report that determines if there's errors? Like if you're missing information and how often do you do a report like that?
So when we get prepared to do our submissions, they do generate warnings of several different severity levels. They have warnings, special warnings and fatal errors, just like it sounds like the fatal errors are the most severe. We actually cannot process our submission to the state if there's even one fatal error. And so definitely as we get closer and there's a validation timeline in your packets, as we get like a month and a half, two months out from those submission deadlines, we're already giving those TSDS reports out to our campuses. But on a regular, everyday, weekly basis, as program managers, we're checking and verifying, we're pulling the entry withdrawals. Ms. Bettis has an excellent tracker for our EB's, Alicia Menchaca for our GT students. And so every day we're putting eyes on those lists and we're checking if anything is different, if the numbers are different, which student is it, what happened, emailing or going to the campuses and asking questions to ensure that we're keeping it clean. Because it's definitely a whole lot harder to clean up on the backend. And we definitely want to get, you know, stay ahead of it, but if we have to do corrections, we want to catch them much sooner rather than later so that it's not a mad scramble at the submission deadline.
And that's all Skyward. Skyward does hold all that information and then there's certain people that submit the information in there?
The vast majority of the information comes from Skyward, our student information system. There are some pieces that go directly from other vendors, from like Cambium sends our STAR reports, there's some others that I can't.
Especially what does our frontline.
SAT, TSI, some of those go directly from the vendors to the state. But most of our stuff does go into the Skyward, the student information system and goes from there to the state. And we do have like our campus registrars are the ones who primarily do the data entry. And so Lori trains our campus registrars. We're trying real hard to keep those protected, valued, give them protected time and space. It's something that we talk with the campus administrators about often because you know, if they're, if they're receiving traffic at the front office, that interrupts their work and then the likelihood that there could be an error increases dramatically. So everybody understands the importance, the importance, the campuses are doing a real good job of working with us to kind of protect them. And then we're just constantly doing the training to ensure that they have the knowledge that they need to do that accurately. That being said, she did talk about collecting, entering and verifying. So they are our data entry people, but they are not the ones who collect or make those decisions. That comes from our campus administrators and from the program directors. And so you'll also notice in your packet, there's a list of documents. There's a campus person for each area, there's a district person for each area, those are the people you'll go to if you have questions or who will inform those forms that would be filled out and given to the registrars so that we're ensuring that, that the information that they're getting is accurate to begin with, the person who's giving them that information is knowledgeable. And then there's that paper trail as well to ensure that, you know, we're keeping hold of that data and that it's staying accurate and valid.
And so that happens, how often the report is submitted? Is it like, I think y'all said October, is that, did y'all say there's certain?
Snapshot date is in October. So that captures like all of our economically disadvantaged and a lot of our program stuff, but we do capture and submit data nightly in our programs. But those deadline dates is what they use, the data for like the funding sources, the projections on what we're getting paid depending on our ADA. So there are nightly collections, but there are also like dates that this is the data that we use the accountability for. This is the data that we use the funding for.
And there's like four submissions.
Yeah.
There's four teams. Yeah, there's teams one through four, which are listed in there. And then each of those have a resubmission window as well. And then there's what they call the core collection, which those are all listed in there as well, but it's like our early childhood for pre-K, our early childhood for kindergarten. There's the child find submission, winner class roster, which speaks to the student sections, who, who their teachers are. And they're actually combining a lot of the special education submissions. This year, there will be a new submission called Speds, Special Education Summer Submission, where they're combining all of those, it's like four or five special education submissions into one submission. So I think that'll be a real helpful test as well.
So are you responsible for looking at the changes that just came through and implementing them in the system? Is that?
Yes, what we do is we break it up in our program. So it hasn't been released yet. I think last year I looked and it was like an 80-page document. And so we haven't gotten the new ones, but we will pull the attendance counting because there were some questions that I was already looking at to include like our lever codes, which is our dropouts. So that a way we can give a table to our campuses to say, these are what we will use for withdrawals, these are what we will use for entry. So that a way we're not leaving too many options open for ineligible ADA collections. So we are doing that, but it has not hit that final draft yet. But that's what our team does and then we break it down and then we get it ready for campuses, whether through the administration lens, the collection lens or the PMS lens. So there's different levels of us that train different people. Yes, it's very interesting.
So that's all right. I like data.
It doesn't like just show up to school, right? Because we also had to very, very, very strategic because if we put all of our level four, which is our highest weighted CTE at the end of the day, but then that's when all of the UYL collects their kids, then we're not receiving that funding, right? So you also have to be very strategic, right? On the, the placement of certain things as well. All of our special education, like our resource cannot all be at certain times because we do lose that funding. If in the morning, we know first period, they never show, show up, then that's, that's the money that we lose because of that attendance per minute isn't there. Because it's not always just about them showing up for the day.
I also want to just clarify that, you know, we had projected probably if we corrected a lot of our PMS data, that we were looking at over $2 million worth of funding, right? And so what you saw here tonight, you're probably adding it up in your head going, wait a minute, we projected a lot more. But what you have to know is that that included the CTE funding. And we have to make sure that, like Ms. Graber said, all of our coursework is coded correctly. We have to make sure that our kids are all on track and taking their courses. We have to give the right IBCs, which are our industry-based certifications, because some industry-based certifications, they may not pay for. And so we have to be giving the right tests that the state will pay, will reimburse us for. And so the way that we can, the most funding, the biggest funding opportunity is through our CTE programming and having our pathways strategically aligned and making sure that our kids are going through them in the right alignment. And so that, that funding takes two years to get here. Okay. I think this last year we collected $7,000. Five, I'm sorry.
It was the year before we collected.
It was the year before we collected $7,000. This year we collected five and left about 1.7 and 1.2.
Two, I think.
Two million on the table in those two years.
So that, that is from not, not collecting the right information. Is that right?
It could be courses. So it could be also on the courses, if we don't have the level ones, two, threes, fours. So if you're in this course and then changing it, so if you're not in a full pathway, the reimbursements for IBCs, there's multiple different things for CT and it's also 45 minutes of FaceTime. So if the kid was in ISS for four days that week, we don't get funding for that kid that week. So there's lots of different parameters that can take away from CTE money because it's like they have to be in front of a certified CTE teacher, 45 minutes a day for five days a week. Yes, Jennifer, just hasn't changed since I've gone old. Face to face. Or we lose that funding. Yes. So like I said, it's a lot, there's a lot of complications to it because it's not only with the teacher, but it's also with the course. Did we select the right number? Because there's manufacturing welding, there's agricultural welding. So if we don't have the right courses selected in and all the boxes selected with the weights and dual credit, then we're not collecting the funding on that, which I know that we've been working through going individually with every single course.
It's a whole, whole lot.
What it to, your passion and the knowledge that you have, Lorena and Amy, both of you.
I was like.
I, I look at this like leaving money on the table. Like there's just so much out there, right? You just gotta keep track. And then things stands out for me is the quality, I call it quality assurance, basically spot check and making sure that things are getting done the right way, right? It seems like you have a good team together in place.
Phenomenal team.
Yeah, so appreciate that because like Robert touched on this like many a times. So did Ms. Gonzalez, but this, this is along with the ADA thing, this is like your bread and butter, what's going to generate the revenue to come in and you don't want to leave any money out there. So thank you for the passion.
And we have a phenomenal team that does all the things and I don't think they sleep at the time. I think they work 30 hours a night, so it's fine. But absolutely, it's what's for the kids and it's how we get it all back together and continue to move forward.
Thank you.
Next, we've got information on banned items during the school year from House Bill 1481. Ms. Graber, is that, are you or Ms. Bettis talking about banned items? Notice all of our t-shirts, by the way. By the way, all of our t-shirts, show yours, they all say, there's no crying in PMS.
And this came from an actual meeting that we had.
It's a quote from a meeting, it's a meeting quote.
I'm sorry.
I think that y'all are aware that with the passing of House Bill 1481, kids can no longer have smart devices on school property. And so if y'all just want to kind of give them a rundown, that'd be great.
Well, we did a phenomenal task force. Ms. Pettis and the team built the task force to get some ideas because we know the struggles of not having accessibility to phones is going to be a struggle for both our students and our parents. And so we wanted to get some feedback in regards to what did they feel like was going to be manageable, like not on campuses at all, in possession of it in the back? What did, what did you call it? Out of sight, out of mind?
Away from the day.
Away from the day. So we were kind of working through that with our, with our task force. And Ms. Pettis had grabbed all their information and we're building FAQs. So some of the highlights, she can definitely go through all the information. I'm trying to pull it up at the same time.
Yes. So the, we did different table discussions and so got a lot of feedback, heard concerns, heard a lot of people that were actually for it and excited that we were putting the cell phone away. So we're gonna, our slogans, what we're kind of thinking is brainstorming is away from the day. So they could bring it to the campus, but store it like in your, your backpack or just out of sight, you can't be on it at all. So they could bring it to the campus, but store it like in your, your backpack or just out of sight. You can't be on it at all. So some of the questions they had were, well, what about during transition or um at lunch, the law says no. So the law was a law and so we did present the law to them and they got to see how it was uh first drafted. And then revised so they can u- understand what the law was trying to really hone in on. So uh, the discussions were great, a lot of great feedback. Um. I know Ms. Ayala was there and then I had some of the board members there as well. So we did uh appreciate that. Ms. Minio, sorry, sorry, Ms. Minio, sorry. I did appreciate that. Uh, we did come up with a flyer and because some of the discussion was that they wanted to make sure that that was presented. Um, at registration, which is tomorrow and Wednesday. So we did create a flyer uh to present to the, the, the families as they're coming through. And just trying to educate them. We do, they did ask that we push it out like on social media and the newspaper. So uh, a lot of buy-in is uh, please share this with everybody and why i- it's happening. So we looked at other uh districts to see how they were communicating it and most of the districts were just communicating the law piece of it. Um, they asked, can you put graphics like be specific as to what items and the law does list the items. So we listed those as well. So we heard a lot of great things and we just, uh, we created an FAQ. So we asked them, what are some frequently asked questions that, you know, the community might have or parents or staff might have? And so we got their questions and we answered them and we wanna push those out as well. So we really had a great um learning experience and um we just want to be sensitive with it, but then also be compliant with the law.
And some of the stuff that we're still working on is the, like the list of consequences. So the tier of consequences, if a kid doesn't have the first time or second time. So we're actually going to build that with our campus administrators on July twenty-eighth. And so we're going to be building out the campus matrices and the, and the tiers. And so that specifically will be built on that day. So we don't have that, but it is coming. The next thing that was really highlighted was how are we going to communicate with staff? How are we training the staff and students? So Ms. Pettis has been phenomenal with creating an outline slide deck of, you're gonna present this to staff and then this to students. So we're getting it out there on top of subs. When they come in, what is going to be their piece? And so we're building on that to make sure we give it to our administrators. So they are able to get that by the first day.
And a lot of it again was that feedback. So sometimes our lenses get here and it was just great to have the community come in. Um, I think about ninety-five people had responded that they were gonna come and we're like, holy moly. Yeah, that was a lot, but I ended up having about thirty or so. So it was great. And the team has been really good about adding their parts to the slide as far as those uh early college. Cause some of them, what about the college students that go over there for automotive or the professors from the junior college that come over? So we, we, that's what the slides are. We're creating all that so they understand um that we have to buy but a lot.
And we're also working with our special education department and our five oh four department. As in if a parent wants to come in and ask, what are the questions and the steps and who do they need to meet with in regards to uh that? Um, medical and or the special ed five oh four exemption. And so we're adding that in there as well for parents for that, that point of contact.
I can't remember, um, on the law, is it just the students or is it? Okay, so um, I just wanna make sure that we kind of pass this information along. And I think Jesse may have had the same concern is we need to make sure our, our teachers are setting um, setting a good example. So you, you know, and, and also our substitutes. Don't come in here and be on your phone and we don't have, we're expecting our kids not to be on the phone. Yeah, and I know that, yeah, that came up, like, yeah.
That's part of the, the slide deck that we're all building. It's like we're modeling it, make sure our phones are away. You have excel, accessibility to them as you need, but we don't want the teachers to be walking around. But I know, we know use them for timers and everything, but we're trying to strategically make sure that they have it, but not walking around with it. Cause we're modeling the behavior we wanna see.
Think it helps if they're gonna be able to take it to school. They just can't have it out. Cause at first when I read that, I thought. It, this is not gonna be good.
We're just not ready for that. And so as long as it's in the backpack and not in the pockets or not in the, the hoodie or the earbuds are in. It's just away for the day.
And, and trustee Swaddes had a point and um, an idea of, or you know, maybe the classes, the elementaries that don't change classes. And we did it at the college level two on a testing day is, you know, the little shoe rack? And we would come in and we'd put our phone in there and take it at the end of the day. So maybe for like the elementary campuses that don't really change classrooms, they could just turn in their phone. And it would be stored where everyone can see it.
And I think that was the biggest concern, um, parents coming in and community members was they can't bring their phone at all. So it was great to have, um, to clarify some misconceptions. And so we, we want to be asked those things so we can continue to clarify all of it as we're unraveling this House Bill uh fourteen eighty-one. Which is so new for everybody in the state of Texas.
And I'm not saying we got it all together and we're gonna work through it as it comes our way, but we're trying to use the questions that were posed and some of the feedback. And we're trying to build in those proactive measures as fast as possible. So we're ready on August sixth.
I have a good question. So I wanna clarify, um, so the kids can have the phone, but they cannot use it whatsoever.
Be away from the day. Someone needs to be in their backpack and they cannot have it on their person.
Yeah, so they cannot like go to the bathroom and take it with them and try to like, you know.
Passing period. So what we say is when they enter the classroom, like when they get on the campus, they're putting it away. So that's it. So breakfast.
For parents to pick up. Cause I know my daughter says that everybody pulls a phone out, like when they're waiting for pickup and the pickup.
Well, we said at the end of the day, we're okay at the end of the day because we have uh practices, we have bans. And so at the end of the day, but as soon as they step on campus, because of breakfast, we didn't wanna start the power struggle that early. So as soon as they get on campus. Um, but then at the end of the day, it's, as the last bill, then if you need to contact a parent or anything, that they could at the end of the day. Cause we also don't want the bus drivers to try to have to fight that battle as well.
Yeah, and again, it went back to that feedback from the parents and the community, you know, about that. So we really looked at it all and just, you know, it helped us to navigate how we unreal this plan.
Thank you.
This is like the third uh workshop at home that I go to and I just love the energy that's there. And then you're open to the feedback, right? You don't judge them. You, you listen and you take all that feedback and, and. Exactly, and you work through it and you work through it. Cause it is something, it's something scary. A lot of concerns. When I read it, I was in the same impression like, oh man, this is gonna be tough. But then you're working through that, right? And you acknowledge the fact that you're not gonna have all the answers upfront. So, yeah, so I appreciate you for doing that. Involving the, the community and, and, and of course your staff, you know, they're the ones that are gonna be the, the people facing the, the kids. So you gotta have them in there. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, on to uh effective, well-supported staff. Um, I, I do wanna say we do our very, very best to lead through people. Uh, we are listening. We do wanna hear what people want. It's hard to navigate a system. Yeah, I didn't grow up in this system and I've only been here for a little less than two years. And so without listening to y'all, to staff, to the community, it's, it, it's much more difficult to make those decisions. So yes, thank you to everyone who has come to our task force meetings and our community budget meetings and all the things. Because listening to the community is exactly how we lead every day. So um, in staying with that, here are a few updates from, um, I'm just gonna go over these pretty quickly. Cause we have a couple more. We have quite a bit to get through. Uh, and this is quick. So we will be implementing a stay interview. So we're gonna be sending out a link to people who stayed with us after last year. And we're gonna basically be asking them like, why, why did you stay? And what do you think went well? And what, um, if you could change one thing, what would it be? And why, you know, what, why do you stay at your job is? And there are multiple questions about that. So we always wanna know why people left us. Were they unhappy, all the things? But we really wanna know like what, what's going well, like what keeps people here? So that we can continue to build on that as well. We want all the information. Then uh, y'all need to know, I wanted to give y'all an update on critical vacancies. Currently, we have five Dalton teachers and one counselor vacant. We have one uh legacy slash U E F teacher vacancy. We have one teacher and one counselor vacancy at Batesville. U H S has seven teachers and one assistant principal that's still vacant. Morales Junior High has one assistant principal and four teachers vacant. U D L A has two teacher vacancies and D A E P has one teacher vacancy. So if you know anyone certified who isn't working or someone who wants to get into a program to be a teacher. Please send them our direction. We are still very much hiring and school starts shortly.
Vacancies do we have right now? Do you know on uh teachers?
They're all here. So five, six, seven, fourteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. Twenty-one. Okay. Thank you. Okay, good. So less than twenty-one at this point. So we're, we're working. Okay, so that's our HR day update.
There's something, I guess on exits or people that are staying, maybe like if we. I know they might do an exit interview or something already, but maybe something that says like three things that they would change or three things that they liked. And that's something we could see as a board and, and on exits. It could be three things they like and three things they change or whatever. And that we would kind of get a synopsis of that, anybody exiting or staying, I mean, either, either way. I think it, um, I think it might be interesting just to see what people are saying. I mean, it might indicate something, it might not, but it, it could give us some information on things that we could do, improve on. Yes.
Absolutely. As we implement, so I've shared, I believe it was last time we were together, maybe the time before. Y'all got all the exit interview information. Um, and so, but as soon as we do the stay interviews and I can keep y'all updated with both of those, like the exit interviews as they happen. And then whenever we get, we close out the stay interviews, I will absolutely bring y'all the information.
I mean, it, it doesn't have to be that full. I don't even know what that looks like, the exit interview, but I'm just saying like something that they do, like a survey. Just a couple of questions that spits it out, the data, just not even, I don't, I don't know. I'm just thinking something that's simple.
Okay, yep, we can do that. Um, are we good on HR? We go to the next? Okay. So next, I'd like to invite Chief Puente up to the uh podium. Because he's gonna give the monthly uh police department update.
Good evening, uh, Board President Pettis and good evening, Ms. Superintendent Ms. Colas and members of the board. Um, so I've been here two months. Pass real quick and uh. I have a couple of updates. The first one's gonna be on training. Um, officers uh have continued participating in professional development throughout the summer. Training included or com- training completed uh includes the escalation technique class. Uh, T C I C and C I C, which is Texas Criminal Investigation Center and National Criminal Investigation Center certification. So they've completed that. Um, crisis, they just completed crisis intervention uh this past week. Intermediate crime scene investigation is gonna be July twenty through August the second. Uh, we have an alert training class that is being conducted by the uh, Uvalde uh Sheriff, uh County Sheriff's Office. Uh, that one's scheduled for Thursday and Friday at Morales Middle School. And all officers are, all current officers are all school-based law enforcement certified. Which is a mandated uh certification in order to work in a school as a police officer. Uh, and all training has been uh fully grant funded. Uh, kept collaboration with, with uh, with local uh agencies. Uh, we continue to strengthen partnership with neighboring first responders. Uh, joint walkthroughs of campuses are being scheduled with the first responders and all other uh emergency personnel to improve preparedness and coordination. So we're gonna be putting a calendar together to kind of schedule all the walkthroughs of all the schools. Um, staffing, uh, we are currently filling uh two vacancy due to resignations. Um, in addition, we are working to build um internal structure within the department to increase efficiency and effectiveness. Uh, operation and equipment, a structured system for equipment inventory management is being created. We are replacing outdated equipment in phases to ensure that we meet the modern law enforcement standards. Officers have been taken, officers have taken additional responsibility to support department improvement. Uh, compliance, all officers are current with state mandated training and remain in full compliance with TCO, which is our Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. That's our licensing agency. Uh, community engagement as we move forward. The C I S T Police Department is committed to build strong relationships with students, staff and families. In effort to earn and maintain trust with all district stakeholders.
Any questions for Chief?
The uh, the two vacancies, Chief, um, are we, do we have applicants that are coming in?
Yes, uh, they're, they're going through the process already. So we're hopefully within the next week, they should be filled.
Okay, thank you.
Chief is doing the background checks and they're extensive, you know. The, the background checks are very extensive.
Uh, one of the resignations, no, thankfully those three are staying with me. Uh, so I was able to kinda, kinda talk to him and tell him what my vision and. What, whatever, you know, what, what we wanna, what we wanna do with our department and they're gonna, they're gonna stay with us. Actually, one of them pulled their application out uh from uh, they had already uh applied at Eagle Pass. And they recanted their application, so.
Are y'all doing trainings um during the summer right now, like um while they're not in school? Do y'all do trainings or what? How do y'all do that?
All, what, all of the ones that he listed have all been over the summer when no kids are in school.
Like at different campuses or how do y'all do that?
Well, it depends who has it. If it's the county, whoever's sponsoring or whoever's uh, uh. Hosting the, the training, that's where they will go. If it's county, like county's having uh the alert training and they're gonna have it at one of our campuses. So we'll have, we'll have some of our officers go. Uh, they're all in compliance. So they've all taken that, that course already. So they're not required because they're within the two-year uh compliance. Uh, uh, I guess the, the, they're within the compliance day. So they have to take it every two years. So they're all up to date. Uh, so this is just kind of a, a refresher course.
The radio's been updated. I know that there is talk about them coming in. Are those updated already or?
As far as I know, all our radios have been updated.
They were being donated, right? The radios at one time? And they, did they come in already?
Yeah, we, we did approve.
Some kind of donation of the radios. It might have been before you came.
Yeah, yes. And they, yes, yeah, and they are, they're, they're.
They're implemented.
Yeah, they, they are, they're updated.
And how do y'all get alerted? Like whenever they push that button, do y'all get a notification on your phone or how does that work?
On what do you, the?
Um, that alert system? How do, because y'all are not at a computer. So where, how do y'all get an alert when that happens? Just wondering, does it go through the phone or?
It goes to.
An app or something?
Yeah, it goes to an app on there. It's, it goes to administrators first unless it's the eight clicks, which goes to all the police forces. It, so if it's just like, hey, I need an administrator, like man down. Uh, you know, medical emergency, you push it the three times and an administrator gets an alert, they respond. But if it's pushed quite a bit and we just tell them, just keep pushing it. Yeah, but yeah, well, it can be one person.
And multiple people are doing it as well.
Right, it, even just one person pushing it eight times and we don't tell them to count to eight. We just tell them, keep, keep pushing it, just keep pushing it. Because that alerts, it calls him, it calls Uvalde P D, it calls everyone. To alert them that we have.
Sample runs with those that come in, like do y'all have a, a, a drill where the alarm goes off? And what y'all do, like protocol to follow is?
I'm gonna be getting with the other local agencies and actually all first responders. And just to come up with a plan in case something does happen. Um, there's also a program called TAC and that's sponsored by uh D P S. So that's gonna be an app, an app that we're gonna, the law enforcement are gonna get. So that's pretty precise. That's almost like a G P, it's almost like GPS for law enforcement.
But that, but that thing that comes in, how does that work? Is it, it, it's an app on your phone?
Yeah, it's an, it's an alert, an alert.
Like it comes up, I'm just thinking about the phones that we're saying we can't have. And they're gonna, y'all are gonna have fun. So it comes up. And, and so, yeah, so it'll just be an alert that comes on. And I, I was uh reading some things about those alert systems and you can't, um, what is it called? Turn off the sound like it's, it overrides it. So that's.
And it'll give a precise location where it, it'll give a precise, wherever the emergency is. Whoever pushes the, the button, that, that's gonna give us a precise location on our phones.
And like, does it give you a map? Is that what it does and how does it?
Maybe it just gives us a location.
Like it says the place.
It, yeah, since he just had the map on it, it, you can see right where the person. It, yeah, since each has a map on it, and you can see right where the person-
Button is, was where they pushed the button, it's interesting.
Yeah, we were at a football game last year, and there was a fight as we were leaving, and my daughter hit it, and it was like, like, they knew exactly where she was at, where she was at when she pushed it.
Which is why we encourage all of our staff members to wear their badges on any district property, like, and including football games. Because if you're up in the stands and somebody has a medical emergency, you push that button, and everybody's gonna swarm to that.
To that location, yeah.
It sounds sarcastic.
I'd like to see, not at the moment, but I'd like to see at one point, like a demonstration on, on how that works. You know, like, to try it out. I think Jackie, Jackie's got a point, like, not right now. But, you know, Jackie's got a point, like, how often do you run the drill? You know, like, to test and make sure that-
Like a mug drill.
Exactly, you know, because that is obviously critical, to make sure that.
Yeah, we- Monthly drills?
Yeah.
We do monthly drills, and so, um, and we check badge health monthly. You know, we get the alerts, but the monthly drills incorporate all of our safety mechanisms. So you're welcome to come and see, we'll plan it with, we'll plan it with Ms. Gonzalez in Batesville, or wherever you're at, wherever you want, plan.
I think we have to, I think we have to alert also the surrounding emergency personnel, let them know that it's gonna be a mug drill. It's not an actual, it's not an actual emergency.
Something like that, where it sends out, uh, drills, um, safety, or I can't remember what it's called, but every now, I have, I have the app on my phone too. So they'll send me a message, and JJ probably knows it, what does it say, save, um?
Um, just, we're gonna have drills, uh,
Drill.
Secure, secure drill.
Secure something, but it's like to, to like basically test that our, our phones are working and they're in place, it, it might be good for even the staff, you know, uh, to, I don't know, like, if a, if a staff member presses it, does everyone get a text, or just law enforcement?
No, I, I believe it with the, the one that we have here at the school, everybody gets a-
Everybody gets it on their phone, okay, so. And their computer, so, I mean, it, I think what the reason, the reason the college does it is just to make sure the systems are running and it's working, and, and different things, it's not just for, you know, uh, someone on campus, but, uh, weather alerts or something like that too, so just to make sure that everyone has their systems in place too, so. But I, I think that's what Jesse might be talking about, is like to be-
And normally, they'll say that it's a drill.
Oh, yeah.
That, that it's not an actual emergency, it's not an actual emergency.
A different drill. Okay, and you can come see it, whenever you want.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I do want to announce, I have exciting news. Um, in listening, we have, I've done a lot of listening since I've been here, and I know that safety and security continues to be um, top of mind for everyone. And I'm excited to announce that OmniAlert, which they're a leader in AI-powered gun detection and emergency response technology, has introduced the Safe Haven Grant Program. And this initiative is, aims to provide school districts affected by gun violence or financial constraints with advanced safety technology. The Uvalde Consolidated Independent School District is the first beneficiary of this grant, and we are receiving a three-year deployment of OmniAlert's AI gun detection platform across our campuses. This is software that will be installed on our camera system. And should anyone be coming toward, be caught on any of our cameras, brandishing a weapon, um, it turns red on the monitor right then, and sounds an alert, so that we're able to get um, an officer alerted, our dispatchers watch that, the whole, you know, they watch those screens all day. And so, if something were to be detected, they would be able to, to deploy our, um, law enforcement there immediately, and call backup for them immediately. Uh, the Safe Haven Grant Program that was launched by OmniAlert will annually, they're gonna annually select a district to receive comprehensive deployment of their visual AI detection platform. We're grateful, again, to be the first recipients. Uh, the district had previously identified that OmniAlert's technology would be our preferred solution, but we were unable to proceed due to funding limitations. And the grant now allows us to implement this critical safety measure district-wide, ensuring a safer environment for staff and students. So we want to thank OmniAlert for the three-year, um, use of their software. And we just wanna reiterate that our number one priority is to keep students, uh, and staff safe, which is why we've been, why we had been looking to add OmniAlert visual AI gun detection to all of our sites. And without the grant program, we would be unable to bring this life-saving technology into our schools, and again, we're just very grateful for the opportunity that OmniAlert, um, and BCD, their, their partnership and their founder have given us to move forward with this district-wide. So, very excited to announce that, and it should be online very quickly in the next few weeks. So.
It's like, is that able to detect the gun, like, within clothing?
No, it's, it has to be branded, so it has to be showing. So if someone were to be walking toward our campus, and our, a- as long as our camera sees it, it's AI technology that has all of the little, you know, detectors for the shape and size, and, and so, if it detects it, it has to be brandished, though, it has to be shown. But immediately, we know right then, there's a gun on campus, or there's a gun coming toward campus, and we can deploy law enforcement immediately.
It showed something, it doesn't show that.
That, that's, uh, what you're talking about, what we have Palomino, because that's a different, yeah, that's different. That's where, it's, um, it, it's like right when you're going in, but that has to be manned by law enforcement, like, while it's, while it's being used.
It's exciting. Um, okay, so next up, um, I, we have the CNI team, I'm not sure exactly who's presenting, but our truancy plan, we're gonna talk about truancy. That's what I thought, I thought it would be those two, but I didn't wanna call Christie out and have her be like, what?
We sent them back for reasons. And so, we did have a benefit, and we also met with, uh, our Director of Recovery Services, Ms. Katie Hughes, um, with our JPs in regards to a truancy program that we wanna establish and have a system for. So, right now, um, we are currently gathering some data from other districts that have used, um, this process. We've also developed a truancy tracking form, that's about five pages, to say, okay, what are we doing on absent three, what are we doing on absent six, number nine, what interventions are we doing? Is it counseling? So we have a whole intervention section. And then Ms. Hughes is also gonna work with our JPs to say, what can, um, Uvalde, Team Uvalde, what outside resources can we also provide? If it comes to the point of, um, doing some kind of court intervention as well. So right now, we're in the process of creating the intervention document, so Christie has access to us right now, Ms. Perez, as well as Ms. Hughes, and they are going through updating all the interventions that our administrators are able to use. We are also working with our PMS Department, with Loretta and Lorena, and we are automating letters so that a way we can make sure that in absence number three, six, nine, whatever we deem that is the most appropriate, and that aligns with our JPs' recommendations, that we get those letters out. Now, some of the stuff that we're working through is, if a student is medically absent, we, how do we redact those letters? So we're still working out some, um, data verifications and clarifications, so that a way, not everybody gets the letter, especially if they don't need the letter. And so we're still working on those processes, on how we can tighten it. Uh, but that is where we're at right now, we're building out a plan, building those partnerships, and then, um, incorporating the community, and what is that next step outside the community as well?
Additionally, our, the county attorney, um, County Attorney Dodson was there at that meeting as well, and the, it's JP two and JP six, Judge Casburn and, uh, Judge Sanchez, and the county attorney are on board to help us launch the, you know, once we get to that point where it's time to refer out of our system, because we're building a strong safety net for families. But if it gets to be a true truancy situation, we've got thirty-five, forty absences, and they're still determining right when to, to send them, but when we've exhausted all of our measures, that's whenever we're going to turn it over to the, to the judge, who will turn it over to the county attorney, and bless it, to go back to court, instead of court date for it, so.
And so, one of the things we did in the meeting was a great question, right, who do, what, what numbers are we looking at? And so Christie and I, uh, and then our PMS Department, they were really good on the weekend, I'm texting them, and they're getting me the data. But like, for the past three years, where were our numbers at? And like, we had seventy-four kids in the district miss over a hundred days of school. Um, we had two hundred and seventy-nine kids miss over sixty days of school. Um, and we had two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight students miss over nineteen days of school. And so, like, we cannot tackle all of those numbers. So what we are going, we're doing is, we're going through, what is going to be our highest leverage to get this started? Um, so that a way, we're not trying to overburden the system, and then everybody backs out and throw their hands up. So we're also trying to target exactly based in historical data, like, who are our biggest return? Because I can't even say those were all seniors, or all secondary, there was everything from a pre-K kid to a first grade to a second grade, and I'm talking about the hundred days or more as well. So we're pulling some of that data to even, to see what should we even tackle to begin with first? Um, and then we're going to be very strategic, so again, we don't overburden the system, and everybody throws their hands up, um, in dealing with, um, some of the needs that we have at this point.
Are we gonna have this live, or does it start?
We're working on it, sorry.
We gotta beat the teacher, that'd be a-
And Christie has, we already, we did a truancy flyer, so the same table that's doing the House Bill fourteen eighty-one, and Dr. Guerrero, and, um, Christie is building that, um, truancy, this is what we're looking for, this is some of our processes, this is what you need to know, and so we will have those available tomorrow and Wednesday as well.
I think until nineteen days is, that's, that's still way too late.
Absent number three, so we need to start it right off, so we wanna have it for the campus administrators. So we wanna start with a communication to the families, we need to train our campus administrators, what she's building that outline for that deck, as well as our PMS Department to get it automated into the system. So that a way, they're not trying to handwrite these letters as well, but it's an automated system where they just get an email saying, hey, these are the kids that are gonna get this letter, and then we're working with Anne Marie and then, and the Communications Department to see if we can mass put those out, because we wanna mass email them, but we also wanna mail them. Because if they're not living in the district, or they no longer live there, then we can make those home visits, and then we can either withdraw them, or we can provide them additional support. So that's kind of like our brain as well, in the, in the process, and building it out.
How do y'all communicate with them now, uh, when they miss, what happens? What is the process now, like, do they get a text, do they get anything if they miss that many days, or there's nothing right now?
Well, it depends on what campus, because I know at Dalton, there is like a Google form that Ms. Tarski has, that teachers contact first. Um, I know other campuses have parent liaisons call them, so we do, I know apparently, liaisons did do a number of home visits in regards to absences. We even had a few administrative withdrawal on absences, um, through the year when I was going through the leave our codes. So the administrators are going through the process as well, but it, there isn't a consistent system. So one thing that we also did at District Leadership is we had campuses develop their attendance plan. What is your tier one, what is your tier two and tier three, so we started to have campuses think out what that plan's going to look like, and they were submitting us that before the first day.
So it'll be the same process at every campus?
It's gonna may look a little different, Philip, but the steps will be the same, but of course Dalton is gonna have a different feel and a different look than um, the high school, so they'll have their own unique, but the steps and like, phone call, home visits, the letter, the steps, and the process, the system will be the same, the delivery may be, um, or that personal touch may be a little different.
We, we had that many students miss all those days, you know, how many did we retain? On the current grade?
Sure.
I mean, neither.
We had a, um, have to reach, but I'm looking at Lori's, I know there was a retention list, it wasn't two thousand students for retention. But I know it was maybe twenty, it was less than ten.
Okay, so they made the hours, because I know we have Saturday classes.
We did have Saturdays classes, and we do have the hours and the credit recovery, so that is one of the things that we're trying to, you can't miss all the school days and just go to credit recovery, so we're trying to build some of those safeguards in, because that has become a habit. If I miss school, then I'll just go to credit recovery, and I'll get my credit anyway, so.
Well, well back, I think the, the judges were finding the families two hundred and seventy-five dollars, but then we ran into a problem where they, the families couldn't afford to pay that fine. So that's another thing that, I mean, if they're gonna-
Yeah, and there are safeguards, I, I mean, I know they were talking amongst themselves on what some of the consequences they can give, we don't have any's, you know, like, once we hand it over to them, it's whatever they are going to do. Um, and so we were just kind of listening, but yes, um, that's the reason why we're trying to add as much proactive as possible, because once we hand it off, then of course you lose your, your control on what you can do at that point. Yes, sir.
I know several years ago, probably five, seven years ago, as you may remember, um, when our, when my child wouldn't, was not in school, whether it be because they were sick, and I, you know, I tried to, we tried to be responsible parents, notify the school, hey, uh, my child's not gonna be there because they're sick, but if we failed to do that, we would get a phone call, an automatic, an automated phone call. This is, um, Uvalde Junior High, your child is missing, please notify us. I don't know what happened to it, do you remember that?
Yes.
And that always prompted me, oh, I forgot to notify.
A field trip, I would get it.
After party from class?
Right, yes, but it was automatic, and so then, say, my child was out sick or at a doctor's appointment, every period would call me, every single period that she was out. I don't know what happened to that, but it was, it was right away, yeah, it was very quick.
I'm pretty sure-
Okay.
I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's the one that automatically generated.
It's like, right when the teacher did attendance, like, five minutes later, the alert was out.
So I know that we're currently looking to see within our systems, instead of purchasing more stuff, so right now, the letters are what we have, and I also know that Ms. Katie, um, which is our Director of Recovery Services, she's like, okay, we'll have the parent liaisons on campus, they're going to be assisting, and she's breaking the parent liaisons up to campuses, so they get that list, and they can start calling with the PMS. Uh, but we're just trying to clarify, like, what the process is going to be, but yes, it is not the same across the district, and we're trying to work towards more of a common system of making sure that we call when the letters are getting sent home, and how we track it.
I think the key is, and when we interviewed, and I know Erica mentioned it, is the key is motivating them, is keeping them coming, and it's the information to the parent. Um, we, when we were in training, we went to Tasby, Laura and I, and Ms. Colas were all in the same one, and it talked about even pre-K, that's the, the most critical year to inform them about attendance, is pre-K and kindergarten, and getting them that information, but I mean, I think, I mean, I know Erica brought it up, but a lot of the other, uh, all the other interviewees were saying the same thing, is just about motivation and getting them informed, and so I, that's what I think Robert's talking about too, is just getting, making sure when we roll this out, um, that we, that we let them know, even, you know, we're gonna be doing registration, we need a campaign of, of attendance, and how important, I mean, it's obviously on our radar, but you know, some people, oh, the weather's bad, just stay home, you know, no big deal, and and it impacts in so many ways, I mean, it impacts their success, that's not very successful behavior, right? But we need to send that message out somehow to them, I don't know how. Um, that's the key, because I know what Laura and JJ are talking about, costs money, because that used to happen at the college, and it's like, everyone you send out is like, a few cents or something crazy. And so it costs money to do that, unfortunately, because we do have texting systems, but I don't know if there's anything else in Skyward that y'all are already paying for. But everything costs, unfortunately, so something-
Yeah, we're getting the letters for sure, um, because we know that is something that we already have within our system, that's not gonna cost us more. Uh, but we do need a tighter system of making those phone calls, um, and, and then tracking and having the documentation, because again, the JPs will not take the, the, the case per se, if we don't have all the documentation, where we've contacted the parents, where we sent them the letter, where we've done the home visit, so we're trying to make sure that we train and tighten that process. But again, this is all new, and it's another change, so we need to make sure that we communicate it out. We're working with Anne Marie to make sure we get it out through social media, through mass communications, as well as having a table for the attendance tomorrow, um, but we're also gonna be relying on campuses, and so they're even thinking about, I was talking to principals in the back a little while ago, like pie in the face, every six weeks, the high, so they're even thinking about what are ways that they can um, have little mini incentives to, to increase attendance on their campus. Not that all principals are gonna get a pie in the face, but I know a couple that were talking about it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank y'all very much. Next, under Domain for Alignment of Financial Wellbeing with Student Achievement, Ms. Bindley is just gonna give y'all a rundown of where it lands us to be on the preliminary budget um, with the number advised.
Good afternoon, everybody. I believe Ms. Colas passed out, or-
Good afternoon, everybody. I believe Ms. Colas passed out, or y'all have at your desk. So, basically based on a refined ADA of three thousand ninety-seven. Just based on what I've previously presented, um, really haven't had a chance to look more at our appropriations, our expenditures. So at that point, right now, based on um, the three thousand ninety-seven, it looks like we'll have a surplus budget of about seven hundred and sixty thousand. Yes, ma'am.
All right. So, uh, just a couple of item, housekeeping items. Myself, and I will be at Holdsworth starting Wednesday. I'm in council, will join me um, for planning for this coming year, doing some things with all of the work that we've been doing. And so it's a day and a half session for the, I think, what? The, a few of us, and then uh, three trustees. Uh, Laura, JJ, and Jessie will be uh, joining me at Holdsworth, I believe, Thursday. Uh, through the weekend. And so we'll be there from Thursday to Sunday. And um, it'll be a really uh, great learning experience and I'm excited for y'all to get to go. And um, experience Holdsworth and the learning and bring it back to the rest of the trustees. It's gonna be, it's gonna be awesome. Um, all district registration is tomorrow and Wednesday for all students, new and returning. We have what we feel like is a pretty good system set up. All the campuses will be there to receive their people. We'll have um, people to help get registration completed. Uh, it's open from seven AM until seven PM both days. So we encourage everyone, we, we did it that way so that families with. Kids in three different schools can go to one place and register all their kids, because all the campuses will be there. But I do need everyone to know that for the next two days, no one will be at the campuses. They will all be at the high school running registration. So don't try to go to your student's campus uh, for the next two days. Go to the high school to find your people and get registered. It's also not advisable to call and try to make an appointment, because if you can't make it tomorrow or Wednesday. Then you have to make an appointment to, to register with your campus. Don't call them tomorrow or Wednesday, because they will not be there to answer the phones. They call like Thursday or Friday to set up an appointment for registration. But we really do need all students to go through the registration process. So that we do collect all the data necessary to make sure that we have the right coding. And we're collecting our weighted ADA, our weighted average daily attendance for um, different situations. That students may be in. So we're asking everyone to please come out. It should be a good time. It's gonna be fun.
Mrs. Colas, do you know if, will there be nurses on campus, on the campuses?
That was my question, because then that, the, the students don't have their immunizations and then they can't go to school and then they miss school and.
We're providing. Tomorrow and Wednesday, the HDI has partnered with us to be there to give immunizations and physicals. But I know that those are specific times and it's not the full day. So please check the, the information that's been put out. Because you do have to go during specific times if your child needs an immunization or a physical still.
So my only concern is how do we tell people, the parents that that was the day of it? Is it only on Facebook?
No, it's been.
So if we, I know we, in our last meeting, we talked about the concerns of enrollment. And so if we see, what is the plan? If we see the numbers, you know, this next two days that aren't. Is there, are you gonna have a supplemental day that we implement in the following week? Cause I'm just thinking about vacation, people being out, people working, maybe not getting the fifty emails. Just saying, so I mean, just a plan, um, so that we say, well, they, because the concern I have is if they have to make an appointment. And that, I, I just don't know if that will happen.
Well, here's what's gonna happen. They're not gonna get their student's teacher. We've put some barriers in the system, so they will not have a name on meet the teacher night to go meet a teacher. They will have to go register then. Um, there's, high school students will not be able to see their schedule or get their schedule at all. Until the registration process has been completed. So everyone has got to come and register. And make, you know, call up to the school, make an appointment. We've talked about answering the phones at the schools with all the principals. Like they've got to be, have their secretaries answering phones to set up times and it can be every fifteen minutes. Yeah, yeah, Thursday, Friday.
Um, that we say, um, I, I understand we, we want to get them in and we're gonna put a rule that they're not gonna get it. But something that says, we really need you to come, you know? And not, not necessarily the rule. And I think I had talked to Jessie about it, like he's like, go to H and B and enroll people there or something. And just a plan, you know, to make sure we get the kids here and, and, you know, just a plan. And, and I know the state is saying our numbers might go down. Well, how do we proactively face those numbers? If those are our concerns, what do we do proactively to address those concerns? And um, at what point do we say, this is not good? And then we say, okay, what other plan can we implement? To make sure that these kids are enrolled and.
They're gonna, we're gonna be making phone calls. So kids that don't, cut, parents don't come the two days to enroll. There will be personal, like people will be calling, but you're talking about, it's a very, it's a very um, extensive process. Where people have to make copies and they're, so going out into the community, like they, we probably couldn't do that. But we. And getting them in and saying, your, your kid's not gonna be on a, on a class roster. You're, you're gonna try to go right on the first day of school. Your kids, you're not gonna have a class until you come and register your child. So you have to do it sooner.
And I remember last year, right at the beginning of school, it was just mayhem, right? Probably still is going to be, but it's, it's amazing that they wait until that day. Or maybe even a week after school started to say, what do I, what is my schedule?
What do I need to do?
And so I, I don't know, I know you're sending out a bunch of emails already. Uh, but maybe, I don't even know if there's a second registration that we can have. I'm just throwing it out there, uh, something. Do you know what I mean?
If they do show up to uh, meet the teacher and they haven't registered, will we be able to capture them too?
Yes, we will help them. Campuses will be ready to help them register right then.
But we don't want to do that. We want to do it.
We would like to do it sooner.
So we know where to put them.
When they come back.
In October, right?
They usually come back in October. Hopefully they'll come back.
What Robert just said, because meet the teacher is all on the same day. Is that, how is that gonna work?
Campuses are gonna have to. Have their, um, their attendance clerk and probably counselor, like helping people through paperwork.
You might be saying like, say, I, I didn't, I didn't go register and I have three kids at three different campuses.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, is there a way that we can break that up into different days?
No, because school starts so early and teachers don't have a workday, I think, until Friday. So it, we, we, we talked with principals at length about what was the best plan. And they're gonna cover teachers, right, that might have a kid. Um, that they need to go meet the teacher to, while, you know, they might not be in their classroom for forty-five minutes. Um, but it's the way, it's just the closeness, the, we had to back up the schedule in order to do all the Fridays off. So we're starting a week and a half earlier. So it, it's very, we can't.
They come and they're, like JJ says, have three kids, they haven't registered. And we got lines going on everywhere. And they got one registered and now they got two more at other schools. What, what happens then?
They're gonna have to go to those campuses another, like the following day and register their kids. Best bet is just come to registration. It's seven to seven the next two days at the high school. Bring all your kids, get them registered. We have a, you know, pre-K was a pretty good, you know, mini run for the last two years. So, and I, they've been working diligently for over a month on registration and the process for it. Your best bet is to bring, bring your family the next two days and get registered, because it will be, it, it will be a backup. You will be waiting and you may have to go different days and get kids registered. Um, yet to be determined. We're gonna see how successful it is and how it goes. It's better for us to do it every year.
Cause if it is something that we're gonna do next year, let's, you know, have a, write down what worked, what didn't work. And that would be, y'all have a notepad, legal pad.
So come Thursday, they, they're not here tomorrow and Wednesday. They go, they call the school, make an appointment. And if they don't answer at the school, do they, what do they do? They keep calling?
Call a couple of times, because maybe they're on the phone. But at that point, then call central office and let us know. They can also email. That was not, email the principal. Email the principal and the principal will get it to the right human being to call and schedule an appointment.
That might be. Just a plan. I mean, talking about enrollment issues and uh, making sure that we make the money that we need to. Uh, kind of trying to address some of the concerns or the, the issues with our population that maybe doesn't know. And so.
Absolutely. So uh, the next thing on the list is convocation is July thirty-first, uh, between eight and ten. It's gonna be a great time. So if you can make it, please come. That evening will also be a board workshop at six PM. And then the first day of school is August sixth. So.
At the workshop on the thirty-first. I'll, I'll try to zoom in if there's internet service. I'll be out of town.
Thank you.
And I won't be in convocation. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you.
Item number nine, items of division of curriculum and instruction. A, consider approval of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six four-H organizations. As an extracurricular activity and adjunct faculty status for Uvalde County and Zavala County agents.
Thank you, President. That is, each year, Uvalde CISD approves four-H county agent coordinators as adjunct faculty. In addition, approval is required to approve four-H activities as extracurricular activities. Leslie Dominguez directs activities for Zavala County. And in approving each as adjunct faculty, they will be considered sponsors for four-H activities. Allowing Uvalde CISD to count students in attendance while participating in uh, four-H activities. Melinda Flores and Noel Troxclaire direct four-H activities for Uvalde County. Uh, in approving each, already said that, um, they'll be considered sponsors. And then we're able to count our kids present or, uh, yeah, with us whenever they're doing four-H activities. Um, the recommendation uh, from administration is that the board approve four-H activities. As extracurricular activities and approve Melinda Flores and Noel Troxcar from Uvalde County. And Leslie Dominguez from Zavala County as adjunct faculty members for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Motion made by trustee Suarez, second by trustee Riso. Any discussions?
Oh, sorry, the twenty-five, twenty-six. Sorry, I'm sorry. As presented would be for twenty-five, twenty-six. I do apologize.
I was reading so.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item B, consider approval of Southwest Texas SWTC. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six memorandums of understanding.
Thank you. Board approval is being requested by UC ISD Curriculum and Instruction Department. For the implementation of the following MOU with Southwest Texas College. The twenty-five, twenty-six Uvalde Early College High School Pathways in Technology Early College High School. Twenty-five, twenty-six Dual Credit Partnership Agreement, the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six Technical Course Agreement. Extensive collaboration work has been done between the district and college liaisons to secure an agreement towards dual credit. Or concurrent credit opportunities for students defining the alignment of high school with college courses. Instructional and human resources and cost of implementation, among other aspects um, of understanding. Upon uh, the board's approval, financial obligations will be secured through the use of both local and federal funds. And I am recommending that the board approve the agreements listed above. So is Ms. Graber.
I'll entertain a motion.
Page twenty-six B one, it's highlighted in yellow. Can you clarify that about the fifteen hours? It's a page, well, ours is page uh, twenty-six.
Now that's something that we're still pushing, because again, that's part of that one point seven million dollars that we leave on the table. Because if they do not pass the TSIA, then we do not get the CTE funding for that kid at the end. And so that is a, that's a, that's a nicety to get some of our kiddos in there, but we're still pushing to make sure that they test. And get credit for that TSIA. So we are being reimbursed through outcome bonuses, which is the money.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
For the approval of Southwest Texas College twenty twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-six memorandum of understanding as presented.
Motion made by trustee Flores, second by trustee Riso. Any discussion? All in favor? With trustee Suarez and trustee Gonzalez abstaining. Number ten, items of division of business and finance. A, consider approval of budget amendments.
Okay. The Board of Trustees approves the district's general fund debt service and food service budgets at the fund and function levels. To comply with the state's legal level of control mandates. The school district must amend the official budget before exceeding a functional expenditure category such as instruction, administration, et cetera. In the total district budget. Amending the budget will ensure funds are appropriated to the correct function, which will allow expenditures in the correct budget code. The requested budget amendment, along with any impact to the district budget, is presented to the Board of Trustees for consideration. The budget amendment will increase revenues and appropriations for the same amount, so there will be no fiscal impact. The budget amendment will increase revenues and appropriations for the same amount, so there will be no fiscal impact. And so Pam can answer any questions that y'all have over the budget amendment. Believe it's the. Pam.
No, sir, this one's not between functions. We're receiving a donation of forty five thousand dollars. And we are in putting it in function eleven, so it doesn't have an impact on the budget. Yes, sir.
In a minute, y'all are going to approve, approve donate, we're going to ask you to approve donations, but that's what the budget amendment is. It was a donation.
I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Board President, I may make the motion to, uh. Approve the general fund, uh, budget amendment number five as presented.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Flores, second by trustee Suarez. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. B, consider approval of opening account with capital one for the maintenance tax notes.
Thank you. Uh, board policy C D A governs the district's investment activity and allowable investment, uh, activity. The capital one account will be used to account for the proceeds from the sale of the maintenance tax notes. Series two thou- tw- twenty twenty five. The account was require, a requirement of the financing agreement to secure the lower interest rate on the maintenance tax notes. Series twenty twenty five. The administration has asked for an account that will earn interest, increased interest. Throughout the completion of the contract with Schneider Electric. The information was attached. Um, the fiscal impact, the increased interest earnings that will be reserved. Um, that we get from this account will be reserved to apply toward the payments. And administration is recommending approval of the opening of the account with capital one to house our. Um, this, the money from the sale of our maintenance tax note series twenty twenty five.
I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, real quick, on page, um, sixty five of our work packet, well, we need to redo the, the title change of, uh, President.
We will.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We will do that. Thank you for catching that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll entertain a motion.
Madam, Madam President, I make a motion that, uh, the administration, that, I'm sorry, that we approve, um, the capital one account.
Motion made by trustee Suarez, second by trustee Flores. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item C, consider approval of donations.
Thank you. Centene Foundation has provided the district with forty five thousand dollars to purchase educational supplies. The other two donations are from crowdfunding for N J R O T C and the F F A program. Vulcan Materials has provided an additional five thousand dollars to the district for district initiatives. So you'll see on the little chart there, um, and we want to thank these generous donors. For their outstanding, you know, support to our district and we appreciate them very much. And the, the recommendation from administration is to approve the donations as presented.
This time I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Board President, I make the motion to for approval of donations as presented.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Flores, second by trustee Suarez. Any discussion?
Just thank.
Just a big thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would, um, the, there's going to be a wellness fair, um, July twenty sixth. And it's going to be at the new building over by Walmart and the Centene Corporation will be there as well. So if you guys can drive by there and, um, I believe it's Joyce, she'll be there, um, from Centene. Just.
You.
Yes.
Say thank you in person.
You know, this is, it's like a large amount of, send, you know, these foundations or these organizations that donate. Somebody reaches out to them or they just call you or they call the district or how does that work?
So Centene is a, one of the benefactors that supports C H D I. And actually, in a discussion, I, I talked with Ms. Mayela Castanion that runs, it's the C E O of, of C H D I. And in our discussions, I, whenever I speak need, uh, she is very generous in asking, um, her. Sponsors, her insurance companies, if they're willing to support us in specific ways. And so it's just conversations that we have with different people. Uh, you know, some of them are contacts that Anne Marie has, um, through the years. And they're, they, we, sometimes we reach out to them, but for this specific Centene large donation. Um, that was through Ms. Mayela Castanion, through C H D I.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, I, I voted.
D, consider approval of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, twenty six compensation plan.
Thank you. Per D E A local, the superintendent is required to recommend to the Board of Trustees an annual compensation plan for all district employees. The compensation plan may include wage and salary structures, stipends, benefits and incentives. The compensation plan is presented for approval each year. This plan for the twenty five, twenty six school year, uh, includes salary stipends, mileage reimbursement rates, extra duty and substitute rates. Included in the compensation plan are the following proposed items. And we have Dr. Guthieta's at the, uh, podium to answer any questions. It's teacher placement pay schedule, uh, includes the increases required by House Bill two for teachers with at least. Three years of completed service and that's, that amount was, um, four thousand dollars. Um, and then for teacher, yeah, and then includes a three hundred dollar pay increase for teachers in the zero to two year. Um. Range and it will also include the, the additional eight thousand dollars for the teachers who are. It, with five years of experience. Um, uh, so, uh, teachers are getting a big raise. It's, it's four thousand dollars if you have three plus years' experience and eight thousand dollars if you have, uh, five years' experience plus. So we're excited about that. Non-teacher pay schedule includes the changes in the workday calendar for the groups that were presented to the board. Uh, June twenty third, twenty twenty five, and includes a starting pay minimum of twenty dollars and fifteen cents for bus drivers. And that's for a five hour day. Stipends included for the twenty five, twenty six school year includes the changes in the. Stipend schedules for the groups that were presented to the board on June twenty third, twenty twenty five. With the deletion of the elementary grade level chair stipend, which would have been a newly added stipend. We just don't feel like we can afford it. Mileage reimbursement rates reduced to sixty cents a mile for twenty five, twenty six, which is a decrease from sixty seven cents a mile. During the twenty four, twenty five school year. Extra duty rates and athletic event pay rates have no changes from twenty four, twenty five school year. Substitute pay rates, no changes from twenty four, twenty five school year. The remaining funds from the support staff retention allotment as mandated by House Bill two. Will be used to provide pay increases for other eligible employees. And this proposal will be presented to the board for approval as part of the annual budget at the August twenty twenty five board meeting. Um, so if you have questions.
For the, uh, stipends, are there, um, any dual assignment contracts related to that? Are they all supplemental?
They're all supplemental.
Okay. Cause I. Well, um, we didn't agree on anything last, but, um, for the stipends, I mean, some, some are going down twenty percent. Which is a hard hit and then some are going up forty percent. So it's kind of hard to see what the. The baseline.
The logic, is it?
Uh, I mean, I understand they're going off the. The average of it. But I mean, someone losing twenty percent or thirty five percent or something like that, that's a hard hit to someone's budget. Um, I know that people are getting raises for teachers and stuff like that, but. I mean, I know I wouldn't be hurting taking thirty five percent of that out.
Because of the pay increase? So we did take it into account that the state was get, was likely to give a big pay increase. So we tried to make it to where people would not feel it as much because the state is coming in with pay increases. And so it's an opportunity to bring our stipends in line with the average in the region. Um, as best we can. This will be a work in progress over the next couple of years. There are some that need to come up to be with the region average. I mean, we're just doing our very best to, year over year, get a little bit better. But if we're ever going to come in line with stipends, now's the time because of the large increase from the state. That they're going to cover and.
So we could, um, technically vote on increasing like head coaches pay by seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for all head coaches. We could make that amendment to the, to this proposal on stipends for head coaches. Um, trying to get to, I guess, a set standard for head coaches. I was trying to think about, because I saw he cut a lot for the, the golf and I think wrestling. I think they're pretty low on head coaches. Um, is it because of the amount of kids they work with or what was the logic in that?
No, generally the, the difference in the pay for a coach based on the median is the, the length of their, um. Of their season and how many games or tournaments they have. So that's usually what dictates, um, the difference in pay.
So then we, we, um, could vote to increase them, like say, uh, I know you've come off of them by fifteen hundred on this, those coaches. So we met in the middle and we said seven fifty for each one of them, increase it by seven fifty. Um, we could vote on that still today. Is that right?
I, I think that you can make some recommendations of changes you want to see to be brought back. Um, I, I mean, but, but that would have to be a board.
Uh, right.
Board would have to.
Trying to understand. So we could increase it. Cause like I tallied it up. If we went up to six, seven fifty, six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for all of our head coaches. It's a seven hundred and fifty dollar increase. Now, I would say golf and even like powerlifting, get them up to fifty seven fifty. They're a thousand off tennis. Um, you have two head coaches, I think is what it is, is I wrote down eleven fifty, but the total change is about fourteen thousand, two fifty. Um, of an increase. Um, but that's just the, the sport stipends that, that I've seen. But the other one, of course, is the special ed and I know we're under stipends only right now, but I just don't understand why we're doing. I s- it's confusing to me in all honesty. It's, uh, we're, we're looking at days of, that we're decreasing them. And they're losing pay and then we're giving them a stipend. And I remember reading on, on the Tasby website is that if it's part of their, their duties, which is special ed duties, it's not extra. Are different from what their job is, that it should be in considered in their pay, it should be added as days and not as a stipend. Why, why are we doing that here?
So ask me that question again, because I was already thinking about, because you've said quite a few things. So I want to address the, uh, the athletic stipends. I want to address the, uh, you know, you mentioned the tennis, um, but what was your latest question?
The second one is about the special ed. So.
The sped stipend.
Yeah.
Speds, because I see, um, the administrative days, what's happened is we've cut them and they've lost a lot of pay. Uh, based on that, but, but they've lost a lot of pay and we added it to a stipend. And according to what I understand with stipends, it should be an, an additional duty, like it's not their same job. And this is their same job from one of our understanding. So we're transitioning them to stipends. And I believe the recommendation from Tasby is not to do that, that that's not good practice to transition their regular duties.
Specifically which way, it's probably the recruitment, like it's the care unit, it's the F L S, those are hard to fill spots. So those are really.
Right, but the other ones are being cut, um, substantially. And I mean, those are. I, I believe, I mean, they're being funded by the state. I mean, that's all the P E M's data y'all pool is from sped. And, and these are people, is it speech pathologist? Um, both of them got cut, um, substantially. I mean, these are high paying jobs that they can go anywhere. We're not going to get people at, at that value. I, I don't understand.
Okay.
We're cutting them.
I'm, I'm looking at the sped stipends and we didn't cut sped stipends. We took one up, the, uh.
Oh, no.
The big teacher, we, we made an increase.
You cut their days.
Oh, the workday. So let me explain that. So when, when workdays were cut, we, we were very diligent about that. So, uh, you know, offline, I would love to talk to you a- about that, or I could even go into closed session. So let me give you an example. We met, uh, with each one of them, we did what we did, uh, we did what you would call a, a salary review. And we did equity audits. So they got adjustments. So now they're working less days. We made their, uh, salary correct. We gave them a letter to do a follow up from our conversation. Because, um, and then hopefully, you know, we can bring, uh, some kind of pay increase as part of the, uh, support. And also decrease that even more. So it, it, even though it might look like it was three thousand, it might have been seven hundred. It might have been much less after, uh, equity audits were done and the pay reviews were done.
So, but that was based on what you gave us at the last meeting.
Right, the workdays were decreased for the, for that group that was listed on there. But it may not be, like, if you, if you look at their daily rate, it may not be an, an exact loss. After a pay review and an equity audit. We made some, um, adjustments. We did that for police. We, we did that for a number of groups who are on that, on the workday, on the workday reduction.
Dyslexia teacher was cut by thirty five, sixty six. Speech pathologist, there's two of them, they're ten thousand. Uh, I think the other ones are L S S Ps, three thousand, nine thirty two.
That was for the total group. It wasn't for an individual.
Well, there's only two. I mean, it's still a large amount. I mean, the ten thousand is still five thousand. That's a huge amount.
Okay.
Cut.
But like I said, you know, um, an equity audit and I assure you that all of these people got, uh, pay adjustments. So that they would feel it even less and hopefully, uh, Mrs. Pam will be able to bring some pay increases. So, you know, that will go out to the staff that will be, um, impacted by a pay increase too.
So what you're saying is if they lost amount of their strike, the stipend, you raised their actual pay. Cause I know you have the amount of days and then there's the range.
Right.
Get paid in that. So you're saying that you raised the amount that they get paid.
I'm saying that I, we went and did a pay review, which meant that in a pay review, what we do is we determine how many years of service. How much experience? We made sure that that was set up correctly. And in an equity audit, we will compare. Um, to other folks in that group to make sure that, that they're getting paid fairly for the number of years of experience that they have. And sometimes that wasn't the case. We had to adjust people because people with more experience, less experience were making more. So that's, that's what you would do in an equity audit. So there were some adjustments to people when we checked those two things.
But the, the minimum got adjusted on here too, that I, I saw. I mean, it's very complicated and y'all changed a lot of the same formats. It was kind of hard to find things, but I saw the calendar days were changing and so was their pay. So they were being reduced the minimum. So even if, you know, minimum and maximum were being adjusted in, in ways where. Um, it's not even competitive salary, um, in as far as looking at the speech pathologists. Looking at, on these individuals with, with credentials. Um, and, and it says, you know, a stipend can't pay for that, right? You can't pay for that. So that's why you pay them by the, their pay. And, and so we, we're reducing this amount. Um. So the way to increase them is by days or we, do we increase the minimum?
So, um, if you're talking about, uh, some of the special ed staff, you know, like I said, the stipends, special ed stipends were, there were very, there was very little. Change to them and one was an increase. Um, if you're talking about individuals, you know, like I said, there was a lot, there was a lot of diligence taken. To make sure that people weren't impacted too negatively about with some of this. So that's why the pay reviews and the equity audits were done and people were met with individually. Uh, so it, it's different for different people. Uh so it it's different for different people. Uh so, you know, and and of course, I can't talk about individuals, you know, here, but I I just wanna reassure you that. I I believe that uh they were handled, everything was handled with dignity around this and. And we made a a number of salary adjustments because of the equity audits and the and the pay reviews. And um. You know, we, like I said, we followed up with a letter and I and I wanted to go back on the athletics stipend, so I. And there's so many stories, cause these are all individuals, but you know, uh met like the athletic stipends, those were the big ones. And so met individually, so I might have met with someone and they maybe they get six or seven stipends. Some of their stipends were increased, some of their stipends were decreased, sometimes, you know, like when they came in, some of them were really stressed, obviously, when they heard the initial news. But then they're like, let let's, I know with several of them, they wanted it like, we we wrote it out on the board, it's like, okay, this is what, oh, he's like, oh, I'm losing seven hundred. So so some of them were. Once they saw it all together, it, you know, they felt better about it.
They get circle, I mean.
How did they get what? Yeah, they get even sports, dual credit.
But but it's.
Math and science, all kinds of things.
It's a different job, so wouldn't you pay someone for a different job just cause they're getting multiple, you. You can't take that away from them, cause they're doing multiple jobs.
So if they coach football, they're uh they're a football coach, they get their football coach stipend, but then they go over and they coach. Baseball, so they get their baseball stipend, then they might coach girls soccer, I don't know. But say they coach three sports, then they get all three of their stipends, they get multiple stipends, maybe they're a dual credit teacher too. And so they get their dual credit stipend as well, maybe they're a math science teacher.
That shouldn't be held up against them.
We're not.
Decreasing them, cause they got so many of them.
I'm I'm seeing like with athletics, some of their stipends went up, some of them went down, you know, you mentioned the tennis, I wanted to circle back with with you on the tennis. So the tennis where there was one that got reduced, we added a head, we added a head coach for the junior high because. They were just getting one stipend versus two stipends when the person was coaching. At the junior high and the high school, but only getting the high school stipend, so there were some adjustments, so it looks like it was. You know, I think there was, there was another one, um you know, where the he he gets two stipends and they got, they got flipped. And so he's getting the same amount of money. But it looks like he, if you only look at one stipend, it looks like.
But he didn't, we just brought it in line with what the industry standard is in our region.
There's lots of, there's lots of little.
It was very, it was very complex work. And for a long time, what the district was doing was adding days to people because they couldn't give raises. And so if we don't. If if we don't correct that, we're never gonna be able to give a raise. Like we have to, we have to manage our money well and manage our pay. This comp, our compensation plan well, in order to be able to. Actually give a raise to everyone across the board, cause right now, we're talking a lot about the professionals, what about the people making eleven dollars and fourteen cents an hour?
I know they got cut too. Uh I know they all got cut too, I mean, I I've kinda concerned that a lot of the lower level people got cut. Did anybody get cut? I mean, I didn't see anybody on the top to get cut.
So they just got extra jobs.
So and that's concerning to me, because if we found an exigency plan, it's gonna be across the board, so that means these people are gonna get double hit.
So trustee Gonzalez, I I do wanna share, um that has bothered me and it's tugged at me too, which is why we really need to bring some significant pay increases. For some of them and why we need to figure out how we can uh do some reallocation uh of some of this budget, so we can do that for them. So what happened, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you two groups that have really been tugging at me. So a bus driver, they're coming to school, the our school days were reduced, bus drivers drive on days that kids are in school. So to keep a bus driver here, I don't remember what the number of days was, like an extra twenty, thirty days is not, it's not reasonable.
It's not reasonable.
So we had to, I mean, that was, those were things that we had to, and and we ended up, I I worked with Mr. De La Fuente. How much training can we give them? And we added, I I can't remember the number of days, maybe twelve, thirteen days of training for them, which is really more than. What's typical, but we, but we knew that, I mean, same thing with child nutrition services. I mean, i- if our kids aren't going through the lunch line. We can't keep them here an extra twenty, thirty days, so so some of the reduction had to do with. The students being uh in school less, it had nothing to do with the standard.
Right.
Still get cut.
That, yeah, you're right.
I mean, I don't know how we get people here to work at that low of a pay, I mean, it's it's. I just can't even believe that's the pay. I mean, it's so low. People are staying.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to shore up our financials so that we can give raises. But if we, we can't pay people who work directly only whenever kids are in school. We can't just add days to them. Like we have to rectify that and raise their hourly.
Did central office get cut? Did we have any top officials get cut? And I don't see that happening. I mean, we're cutting our teachers, we're cutting our coaches, we're cutting our special ed people and and we're cutting, cutting, cutting. These are the people that are meeting our kids, they're the ones confronting these issues and and not to say central office is not doing it, but. It it's in fairness and and as a, as the superintendent, did you consider that at all and and cutting? From the top and did it happen? Because it's it's one thing to consider it, but did it happen? Because it's it's unfair. And an exigency plan goes across the board and that's three percent from everybody. And believe me, when you cut three percent of two hundred thousand, it's a lot more than your twenty thousand, right? And that's how it's fair, but if we implement an exigency plan right now. Again, on top of these people, they're they're gonna be non-existent, so what's the plan? If we do that, does that mean anybody that's been hit, they're not gonna get hit again? Cause that's what the whole exigency plan is, is it's across the board.
Right, well, we we are not going to get to that point, we are going to do the things necessary to not get to that point. Which is why we've been for the last year and a half. Going to extensive measures to analyze staff and and get right with our compensation plan. Here's what happened to people at central office. We are many people fewer. So what really happened to them is that they're doing three jobs. Like we lot, we now have, where we had three people doing communications, we have two people doing communications, where we had. Trying to think about like Christie, where we had a bilingual director and a, we had student ser- a student services director. We only have one one now that's doing student support services, so they got.
That's happening with with everybody.
There, no, no, people are not getting extra, people are not getting extra.
Principals got got cut, well, if you get more kids in your class. If you get more kids in your class, you're doing more work, if you're losing kit teachers. We don't have enough teachers, so they're gonna in- increase class size, we're losing our paraprofessionals, so they're getting that extra help.
We have not lost paraprofessionals. Uh in the places that we, so, okay. In the places that we're supposed to have paraprofessionals, we have not lost them. In the places we should have them, we still have them, but in places where we were funding them locally. Like at UDLA, like. No, nowhere are there. A there, nowhere are there paraprofessionals beyond pre-K, nowhere. So we can't locally fund that for one campus and not all the others and all of them were offered other roles if they wanted them in the district through attrition. So that's all part of coming in line with like what the standard is. And if we ever wanna get solvent and have, be able to bring pay raises, we have to do all of those things. Like having four kids in a class. Like the state of, like, there's a reason the state of Texas gives us numbers for what they want, you know? Like, there's, we can't sustain running classes with four to seven to ten kids in them. Like, we have to come in line with.
Is the cuts and and I know um is, I mean, that's why I'm asking from the top, when you consider yourself, if you lose your five thousand or ten thousand or whatever. Someone comes and tells you that, it's your bills and that's concerning to me that 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 wasn't cut at the top. And then we're here cutting, cutting, cutting and we're doing all these other things to them, but it's unfair to them, they have to make a living. And I think if we're gonna implement something like that, it's like implementing a raise across the board, well. You're gonna look to your people below you and give them a raise before you give yourself a raise, right? It's the same thing, we should look to ourselves to cut ourselves first before we go and cut these people that are working in. The buses, I mean, I, they're getting paid eleven dollars an hour, it's something unreal, I mean, I don't even know who's working. If they are gonna work, but we're cutting so much at the bare bottom level that it's impossible for them to make a living. And so that's why I'm asking, with if this compensation plan has to be approved, I don't know how, if we haven't even considered cutting from the top.
And I can assure you that no one was cut ten thousand dollars, like we were really diligent to make sure that it wasn't a a ridiculous number. And then how it would shift if they got a pay increase and.
From the state.
So we, we checked all of those things so that people wouldn't feel that.
Monitors, when we cut their days and let let's say a a brand new person was making nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Did we slide them over towards the midpoint pay as we cut their their days or we just said you're? You're cut.
Now, so what I'm hoping to do, like with that example with that group for sure, is to uh bring a a significant pay increase for them.
Yeah, we have the hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And workers for, I mean.
It's not feasible for someone to live and to work in the district, I mean, that's what I'm saying, we we need to look at. Cutting everywhere then, if we're gonna cut them at to that point, it's not livable at that point.
So we have the hundred and forty-six thousand dollars that the state has given us. That we're working on how to, you wanna.
Yes, so we've already, this plan already, i- it it already contains about fifty thousand dollars of that, because we increase. Zero, one and two teachers by three hundred dollars. So we roughly have seventy-five, we could have a little bit more in that group. Uh and then the other group is we uh brought up uh bus drivers. We we made an adjustment to their pay grade and brought them up uh four dollars. Uh the minimum, we raised the minimum four dollars. From the sixteen fifteen to twenty fifteen.
So we're gonna table this right now and then you're gonna make those adjustments and get them back to us, is that what's gonna happen?
So you, what what adjustments do you want? Because pay increases are gonna be separate, uh.
Well, the minimum, I mean. I I feel like there's a lot of changes that still need to take place here, I mean, I I don't see. Adjustments for everybody and we're we're cutting these people at the lowest level, I don't even see how that's possible. We don't, we're not cutting across the board and I mean, these people, we need them, we need everybody.
It's an informational or it's an action?
This is actual, we, this is time sensitive too, because.
Time sensitive.
We we gotta get, I mean, you gotta have a compensation plan, we got people coming back and even when we're quoting salaries. I mean, we're having to use the old compensation plan.
Well, these people have already been cut, I mean, they they said you went to them and said, I've cut a million dollars in in salaries and. I think that's really sad that that's told to them.
We didn't say.
That's what they said to me and and so it's really sad, you know, that they're talking about that, because when I hear that, it's people, right? And and if that even any number you said of what was cut, I mean, I see it as salaries, I'm sure it makes their heart drop. To hear that, to hear you say how much you're cutting, it's not a goal, it shouldn't be a goal to cripple our community.
It's not.
A a good goal to say, let's uplift them, let's figure out how we can keep them working here.
I would love for. The goal is not.
Uh Mr. Risa would like to speak.
To cripple the community, that's not.
Two more things that stand out from from your, you know, presentation or your conversation. An equity audit, you know, you pull them in, pull an equity audit and after you explain it to them, you decrease the money and they felt better. They wouldn't be calling us if they felt better, see that. I don't see how that's even possible. The other thing that concerns me is. You presented this information to Ms. Colas, I believe you told me on Monday, right, last Monday. And we had a conversation on, when we had the last meeting Thursday? We had a conversation and we proposed change on it, it was the the number that we agreed upon. That didn't change anything from what I see. It stayed what you had already worked on in the past. The other thing that concerns me is. Do you have the state finally doing something for the teacher right now? Unfortunately, with four thousand, eight thousand dollars, right, minus all kinds of taxes, top it off. And yet, you find a way to say, you know what, I'm gonna take it from here, I'm gonna take it from there. But the state made up eight thousand dollars, so you really don't, essence, don't get a raise, I hope you feel better about that. You know, it it and I know that it's time to time. I don't see how the, how that in any way, shape or form increases the morale. And to Mrs. Gonzalez's point. You know. To higher ranking folks make a whole lot of money and I understand it happens in my company too, right? They all give, get paid really well. And it's always seems to be the little guy that takes it. And and yeah, you wanna give them five, you know, four dollars for the bus driver, but. To me, it's just, it 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 doesn't make sense, you know, that we hadn't even agreed on the on the ADA amount. You presented that before that and nothing fluctuated, nothing changed, the presentation stayed the same. We talked about. The folks, a lot of different things, the head coach in golf, right, called it one season. Knock them down three thousand, guy tells you, I coached most of the year. Oh, but it's one season, yeah, but that one season is a whole year, I'm putting a lot of time on it, right? But I'm still gonna cut you three thousand dollars. And I want you to go out there smiling, have the golf ball. How does that work out? You know, I I I don't know, I just. Disappointed, um. Three thousand dollars to the Batesville people that drive out there, we talked about that. You gotta have good teachers to go out there, you wanna give them one vehicle to go to Batesville. These teachers are committed, but they also have lives, they're married, they have appointments, doctors' appointments. They're not gonna stick around and wait for everybody to hop on the bus to come back. How do you address these things? You know, how do you, how do you address them? I'm gonna use your own words, equity audit, how do you address them? And make them believe in you, that you're trying to do the right thing for them, that they're gonna show up to work with that smile, the same thing they've been doing. To to get these kids motivated, right? We talk about attendance all the time. That will reflect ultimately on their behavior, their attitude when they show up to work. They're gonna show up because they have to show up, because they gotta pay the bill. A lot of them are gonna show up because. They have nowhere else to go. But that's not what you, how you wanna lead. You know, and I know it's tough, I mean, we talk about this all the time, right? I mean, what do we do, like? Do we shut down schools? Do we shut down? I I get it, but I just, I'm not convinced that this is the right move.
Yeah, and so um, you know, I I do wanna address the Batesville and then uh. And something else, um with Batesville, you know, there is a grant where they're trying to, uh. They've now allocated, I think, like thirty thousand dollars for a retention, um it's a retention bonus. Ye- yes. So hopefully, something like that will offset uh some of this also. Um and and as far as the pay, I'm with you, like, I wish that we did not have a budget deficit, I wish that. I wish that um like all of this is gonna be very costly, like even all these pay increases, there's lots of fringe and lots of other things. Costs that go into this. Not only, I mean, I think we're in a predicament where you you want to give substantial pay increases, I've studied pay increases across the state, I found everything from. Two to seven percent increasing uh what the districts offer um. Portion of of health benefits and other benefits, I mean, districts are doing some amazing things with. Doing some, you know, pay increases for their staff, so for me, I'm thinking, okay, we gotta, we gotta figure out this deficit, we've got to um. You know, we wanna give pay increases, but we also need to rebuild an unhealthy fund balance. So like, you're juggling all these things and so these are very tough, if if we had a really healthy fund balance, we'd say, okay, a million dollars, that'd be. It it wouldn't be a big deal to not touch anything and uh we we wouldn't have to touch stipends, we. Probably could give three, four percent increases and and it would be much simpler, but. I just think we're not in a a situation where it's simple and I think that's why it's such a challenge right now. And if you wanna bring bus drivers and cafeteria, like, that one really tugged at me. And if we wanna bring them for an extra month, you know. And if we wanna bring them for an extra month, you know, we'll just have to figure out what we're gonna do, but that's also gonna be costly because I mean, we're we're and I think that's what we did in the first place, like Mrs. Colas said, we added because we weren't paying people adequately in some areas. We we were adding days just to get them through the door and to get them to say yes to us. But the truth is, we should have just been paying them adequately. And and the special ed groups that you mentioned Are probably one of those groups that we really should have done that to. But there our salaries aren't competitive in those areas. So we wanna make, we wanna have competitive salaries. But we also need to have money to make this happen.
But you cut the days and didn't increase their salary, so you cut the pay. And so that doesn't make sense. Why would you cut their pay? If you're saying that that they they're licensed, they that's what they should earn, then you could cut the days. I get it. We can't pay them for their days that are not here, but we increase their pay so that we compensate them and we keep them. I I think I think the concern I have is the increase comes in and it sounds like I I hate how we talk about it. It's almost like it's a burden to us, these employees, they're a burden, but but they're not.
They're not, they're not.
No, I I I heard it the last time too, and it's this pay that you get four thousand and eight thousand. You have to pay Extra money because of what the state gave us. I mean, let's be happy. Can we just be happy we got it and say I'm glad we're we're doing this.
Are happy, but we have to be able to pay for the fringes and y'all have to know that it costs.
It's all about the language we choose, and we've talked about this before in the back. It's the language we choose and how we deliver this message. But if it sounds like it's always a burden to us, if it sounds like it's all bad, I mean, it's great. I'm happy for them. I want them to have this 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 raise. I'm excited for them to have that, but I feel like We're delivering this message like it's terrible that they got the raise and and Our district is experiencing uncertainty right now is what it comes down to. It's not that it's just my concern. It's that I've heard it from so many people, the concern of them being able to live and to function at the at what we are doing right now. And you say a deficit budget, but the what we approved, the ADA is not a deficit budget. And so I I don't know how this compensation plan wasn't adjusted based on that. And I'm not saying eat all of it, but but like I said, just the adjustment to those stipends, it's only fourteen thousand dollars. I know that's It's a lot in some cases, but it it gives some people some cushions, some some wiggle room. It might not be a lot to everybody, but that is somebody's meal. That's somebody's water bill or whatever it is. And the cuts that we're talking about, there it's not like they're sitting on amount of money. They're making it paycheck to paycheck, and that's the concern. I I don't wanna be difficult. I don't wanna be tough, and I understand there's a budget deficit that we're talking about. We don't have a fund balance. Um the hope is that we get kids here, we enroll them, but we gotta keep our teachers happy. We gotta keep that frontline happy. Those special ed people, they are pulling in a good chunk of money because they're getting those allotments that we're applying for. So if we don't have them, I don't know what we're gonna do. What what happens if we lose them if they go somewhere else? Because they make so much money. Uh they can make so much money somewhere else. And so, I mean, I I hear what you're saying that you're gonna adjust it. I just don't understand why we didn't receive this adjusted.
Okay, so let me just say, when y'all cut the um the ADA That there was a nine on Pam's, the recommended number, we would have had a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit. So when y'all adjusted it, that covered the nine hundred thousand dollar deficit, okay? And gave us a seven hundred thousand dollar cushion. Now that That budget that Pam presented was with this compensation plan. Okay, so Like if we keep adding back, if we keep adding adding back things like all, you know, all day pre-K for all. Um you have swim team, pay everybody their stipends, like we We are not gonna have, we're gonna have to go into fund balance again, and we can't do that. Like, we have to at some point, we have to make cuts. We are following what the, I mean, this is one of the things, part partly Partly why I wanted y'all to see it like this again and talk about it here is because This was one of the recommendations, one of the higher recommendations from the finance committee was Bring stipends in line with state standards and and days, like we need to do that. And we do wanna In no way do we feel like it's a burden, but everybody has to give raises to everyone, to the state raises. We're grateful. But everybody has to recognize that there's there's a cost to that, that we have to plan for. And so if we don't plan for it, then like I'm not doing, we're not doing our jobs By warning y'all that there's gonna be this increased cost on the backend that we have to plan for. Um and so You know, I know that it's painful until we can get our fund balance up and our attendance good. I'd love to come back next year with a Four percent raise for teachers, but until we get our finances in order, like we can't, we can't do it. We we don't even know, like, we covered a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit with this built in. And you know, we have that plant closing, we have ICE moved into this area. We don't know how many of our kids aren't gonna come back to us. So You know, we could talk about with that seven hundred thousand dollars, we could see how it goes and do a retention bonus. If y'all wanted to at Christmas time, like depending on what our finances look like, there are other ways to help people. Um but please know, none of us, like, this was the hand we were dealt. And we're trying to be good stewards of the district finances so that we can get to a place. This is painful for all of us. Like, we we don't like doing this.
I'm I'm I've the thing, last meeting when we were here, we talked about this. And I know Robert and I talked about it, and I think Jesse brought it up. Was that we asked for this percentage to come down a little. We saw that this large percent and then nothing, nothing changed. We shared our concerns. We talked to you like options, what could we do that would be different? And nothing has changed. I I mean, I I don't know, why is it presented to us? Because the board has to approve it. We're we're the board. And and I still don't see how we don't make adjustments to it. Is it, does it, does it not matter?
If y'all voted down, if it is voted down, we take it back and we work on it, if it's voted down.
I think, trust me, when you also would like to speak.
I think um the main, I think, point that I I feel like we're trying to conclude here is We just want these people, the the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers to have a livable wage. And um you know, I think we just need to find That, I mean, I know there's not that many of them, so is it, is it that Is it, is it that hard to find that there that we can have a cushion for them? Because they are the lowest paid, and I think that a lot of times, you know, janitors, they go on Um not unnoticed, but they're always, you know, the bottom of the, you know. So is that something that we could possibly relook at and?
Yes, we do plan to bring that uh to the board for, you know, with the pay increases. So I'll give you an example, just raising the eleven dollar employees up to fifteen dollars. And which makes an adjustment because, you know, on your pay grades, it adjusts everyone. So uh Pam and I, we worked on just some rough numbers one day. It was like three hundred and something thousand dollars. So just to put all that in perspective, like just focusing on that group and getting them up to a fifteen dollar minimum. Uh you know, and like I said, we have this uh hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, which We're already down to a hundred. That just puts it in perspective that eve- and that's not looking at pay raises For all the other support staff that we really need to consider. So uh so yes, we we want to, we've we've already played with some numbers. Um and when we saw that that um That number, we were like, well, maybe we can't go to fifteen. And so, you know, because we want to.
Pay plan, you're saying a best monitor at the very minimum. Is that like an entry level person would make nine thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars a year?
Okay, yeah, working the five hours.
They don't work, they don't generally work five hours. Please know, they work maybe an hour and a half. And maybe an hour. I mean, none of our bus routes are ma- mo- majority, majority of our bus routes are not that long. And so forty-five minutes, you know, they come into work for an hour in the morning, they come in to work for an hour in the afternoon. We pay them for more hours than they actually work, so that it gets the money up. Many of them, you know, That it's a, they work other jobs or they're retired or so this is just a supplement, that's a supplemental income kind of thing.
But it's still a hard job and we do wanna increase the pay.
And saying increase, what do we just keep it the same? What if we just said, we're not doing this compensation plan and we just go back to what it was? We just don't approve this and it just stays as it was, wouldn't they stay the same? Those people, we're not asking for a raise, just let them stay at the same pay.
So you're saying return uh so that we didn't touch their pay, like these pay grades are the same. The only ones that we uh changed were the teacher pay scale and the Uh transportation, the pay scales are the same. I think
Days though.
Right, the days is what changed because kids are in school less. And so we made some adjustment to the days.
The minimum is what it did by the days. And so if you kept the minimum the same And you, the days were less, then it would keep the same pay.
The the minimum me uh the minimum median and the max are still the same. The pay grades are still the same. What the only thing that changed is that there it's their daily rate times fewer days than what they had before because Kids are in school less.
So how do, if we just said not to make this, not to let this go through, this pay gr- this pay compensation plan, we stay with the same one from last year.
They mean the same workdays.
With the same workdays, the same pay as last year. We, if we said that, wouldn't they not, they would stay the same? Is that right?
Yes, they will make the same amount of money, but we we are gonna give them a pay increase because Uh the support staff, the SSRA, we we are going, we need to disperse that to support staff.
But why wasn't it given to us?
The support, because it's not changing the pay grade. You're approving the pay grade. So like Pam has shared, like in the past, like you gave a thousand dollars pay increase to employees. So uh I mean, that's what you've done in the past. My experience is you you give a two percent pay raise, three percent, four percent, you do Percentages. Um but that doesn't change their pay grade. It doesn't Change their workdays, it doesn't change their pay grade or anything like that. You're just giving, you're approving a pay increase.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think based on that, then I I would make a motion that we stay with the same pay compensation plan as last year. Then we could either table this item and you come back to us with the updated one, or I say we vote and we say, let's Table this or actually we stay with the compensation for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And we stay with the same days and we allow them to work.
Yeah, um.
So I mean, I think.
I I just think bringing people in, I think it's best to pay people more. Get their pay where it should be versus having them stay an extra fifteen, twenty days where we're just making up things for them.
Didn't people's pay up then or see?
No, I I didn't. Other than the tran- other than the bus drivers, I had to change that because they're minimum.
Then you you moved their pay for minimum up, right? Well, I'm talking about, let's say, the cafeteria worker, they made You know, at a hundred and ninety days, they made, let's say seventeen thousand dollars. And you cut the days down to one eighty-four. Did their pay go down? Or did you just leave them at the same pay rate?
So the pay would go down because Because the pay rates stay, we didn't, we don't uh give anyone less money because that's bad practice. But they they're working less day, their daily rate stays the same. But they're uh hopefully it'll go up because we're gonna do pay increases or we'll propose.
But their pay did go down because they're working.
Yeah, yes, yes, because it's less days.
That we want them to get.
But not their daily rate.
We can't, they can't get paid for days that don't work.
Well, we're not gonna pay them, we're just gonna pay them. Right, to be the same divided by the same date.
Yes.
We're not trying to pay them for not being here. We just, so I may, that's the motion I make. I say either The motion I'm gonna make today is that um we table this item until you revise this. As we had asked before with the stipends and
People did, not everyone did.
And so we had asked for that before and we didn't get a revision on it. So I I'd like to make a motion that we table this compensation plan until you revise these numbers. So that it's not such a large percentage of a hit on our employees.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna give you my professional opinion about that's gonna be um You know, just adding a bunch of days to people and not having kids to drive around and not having, I mean, we already added all those, so I think I think it's it's best to give them really fair and strong compensation versus just adding a bunch of days.
I think you're saying like, I think she's saying like, keep, you know, your number of days, the new, the new days they're going to And keeps the pay the same. So in in actuality, you're gonna divide that into their normal, what they made last year. It's just gonna be higher.
So here's the issue with that. If we don't keep the, if we don't keep the hundred and sixty-five day student schedule after this year, Then their daily rate is now up and now we add twelve days back to them and then
Change then, but this is
But we would have to reduce them.
That's not
We would have, but you, then we're taking money from them.
Well, yeah, it's gonna be the same, it's gonna be the same. They're gonna end up making the same amount of money.
No, because their daily rate went up, so we're better off, I promise you, we're better off to To approve a retention stipend for people to help offset it as opposed to increasing their daily rate.
And that's the concern is that you're saying these things, you're saying how you're gonna supplement things, but it's not in here.
Because we have to.
Good, but we're not even giving it to them. And that's I Look, I I say, the only time that you really understand this is when you take a hit yourself. When you've, when you feel that pain of not having the extra five thousand dollars that adds up. And I think that is the problem here is that our our, we, our people up top have not gotten cut. And that's why it's so easy, just to go cut people, because these people are being impacted.
It's, trust me, this is not easy. There's nothing about this easy.
So then why didn't we get the top? Why didn't we cut everybody on the top too?
Because here's what I'll say about administrators. They left at eleven nineteen because they have to be at registration at six thirty tomorrow mornings.
Everybody works hard. I'm not saying that.
So but it's not a requirement for every, but everyone else is at home in bed. All the task force that we, task forces that we run, it's a choice for teachers whether they They wanna come or not, they sign up for it. The administrators are there, board meetings, they're there.
That that is the wrong message to even our teachers to say that. Just because they're not here, they work so hard with our kids.
They work.
And so you can't say that. I mean, that that's just wrong to say that right now, but it 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 should be across the board. It shouldn't be one is valued more than another. In fact, I think our teachers should be valued more.
Highly value our teachers and custodians.
Think Gonzalez made a motion to table To table this. And make adjustments based on 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 what we've discussed today.
And is there a second and a second by trustee Riso?
Any discussion? Now you can, okay. So is there another supplemental document that you're gonna submit to us that shows these increases that y'all are talking about?
That, so we still have to figure out what to do with that hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that will come in August, that'll come to y'all in August. And what I'm saying is if we're able, if we if we do have kids show up and we are doing really well financially And we know that we're gonna have that seven hundred thousand dollars, then I can, we can come to y'all in like November or You know, and propose a, like a retention bonus. So.
The last meeting, and I know Robert and I both said it, we wanted to come off of this this amount because it was too big of a blow and it didn't get adjusted. And so that's what I'm I'm saying, we table it and come off of it so that it's not this huge of a percentage. Even Tazby recommends not this large of a percent of a reduction. So it's a huge percent that we're reducing everybody.
For the stipends before we go off this um I mean, some some people are going up for forty percent. Some people are going down twenty percent. So I mean, for the stipends. Yeah, but I mean, till we get to the averages, could we drop it ten percent A year until we get to the average or five percent a year? And then the people that are going up, raise them ten percent A year till we, so we're balancing both sides of going up and down, at least for the stipends, for the other ones. I mean, you can't pay someone nine thousand dollars a year in my mind. For certain people, I I understand what we're trying to do, but for at least the the stipends part. You know, let's raise and lower until we get to, and you know, yeah, we do need to be until we get to and you know, yeah, we do need to be in line with the districts and everything like that, but let's let's cushion it. Let's go up slow, let's go down slow and that way people can make adjustments in their life. It's not a big hard hit if you're doing it just a little bit. And then at least you know it's coming up. Uh this is what the national or not national, the district averages in our, you know, what region twenty. So let's let's cushion that down and then there are stipends going up. I was talking to a coach, he's like, you know, he's gonna make a little bit less money, but it's the way we presented of, hey, let's go down a little bit and let's come up. And that way it's helping people and it's not gonna hurt people as bad. I mean, it still hurts. I mean, I get it.
Saying don't cut, just not.
Let's cushion them into it because it's, I mean, that that could be their vacation, that could be the difference of funding their, you know, Roth IRA or something like that, which, you know, we don't want to take away from them. But let's not be so drastic in some of these catches and some of these cuts. It's late cuts. Thank you.
Is there any way to get the information like all this? Raises or those uh the supplemental? You said in August, right?
Yeah, we'll bring it. It'll come in August.
I mean, we could have a special meeting next week where you could adjust this and um this is the only thing we discuss and you bring it to us. Okay, so then so yeah, you'll do so can we do that next week?
You know, um I hear everything that y'all are saying and I know that it's painful. Um I I wish that we were not in the financial position that we're in, but we're in a serious financial position. And so you know, if if y'all, if if y'all are directing, if if the entire board votes to direct us to raise stipends and bring it back, we're gonna do it because at the end of the day, then like
Haven't said that. We're we're saying like Robert just explained it, you know, just how Robert explained it, just soften the blow. And we said at the last meeting, three weeks ago, and we didn't get anything. And that's concerning because why?
The board didn't, I I need y'all to vote on it.
It wasn't a voting item. It was a discussion item and and three of us, and at the time it was six, only here, three of us said that. And so
Were supportive and other people were not. So like y'all have to vote for me to be able to know exactly what to do.
But you could give us options.
I'm sorry, real quick. Here's my, here's just my concern with continuing tabling. We're already, we're already behind. We're way behind. Um we see districts already posting their compensation plans out there. I had I had calls to like, hey, what's going on? Why are other districts doing it? Why aren't we doing it? So what? We haven't had our meeting yet. We're having our meeting. So we should have a compensation plan here. There needs to be a, in my opinion, there needs to be a decision made and I understand what everybody is saying. Um and it is hard. Times are hard. I've I've been, I've I've had my pay cut. But I find a way to make it work. I went out there and I got me another job. I referee on the side. I do things that I need to do to make ends meet and it's hard. And I don't think I don't think what Ms. Colas said had anything to do with the fact that the teachers are not valued. Our teachers are very valued. And I think we all know that. We all know that. Um and the only thing I have to say as far as like, well, why don't we cut from the top? You know, they're educated people. I'm not saying our teachers are, our teachers are very educated. But for me, when I wanted to go from this pay grade to this pay grade, it required a master's degree. I went and got it. If I wanted to go and teach this over here, I needed to go get special certifications. I went and got it. And so we're even talking about, I don't know, we're talking about um bumping up or whatever uncertified um or any of these uncertified coaches, you you know, or are they uncertified? The on the stipends? So are some of them uncertified?
Yeah, we have, we have three that are uncertified. So
People so you you know, I mean, it's like, if you want, if you want to get from point A to point B, it's about education, educating yourself. Um and trust me, oh my goodness, it's it's such a hard thing to talk about because a lot of these people are friends of mine. And I hope I retain their friendship, but I was voted on, I was put here by the voters to do the best thing for our district. I think touching our fund balance is an uh not a very good thing to even consider. I think um looking at the compensation plan, I mean, I do, I do understand softening the blow. I I I kinda like that, Robert, what you said. Ten percent up, ten percent down. I kinda like that. Um but um we need to move on this quick, guys. We really need to move on it really quick. Yeah, and I and to to the defense, to to the, and I understand, yeah, three of y'all said yes and the other three of us that said no, we well, no, we did, we said something. Um we did, we did say something. Um but so we as the board, we need to give clear, concise direction to our administration team. So whatever, so that's all I had to say. So there's a motion on the floors.
See Gonzalez, second by trustee Riso to table um this discussion and to have more information presented, a different, you know, the change and all the adjustments so that it can be viewed. Um
And we wanted to say what Robert said, I he said it a little bit better than what I suggested. So just the forgot the words you
Right, but we'll have to go, we'll have to go based on your motion.
But he can amend it if he wants.
You can amend it, but um we will go based on the motion unless there's an amendment.
Would like to amend it. So if we could go for the strippens, stipends to make a ten percent cut and then only raise ten percent as well. If it's going up in the percentage wise.
So if it's going down, only ten percent.
Ten percent.
So if it went down, if it went down twenty, go ten percent. Instead of twenty. And if they went up, if they went up forty, if they went up forty, then you want ten percent instead of forty percent.
So that means we're gonna have to notify people who think they are getting more money, which was more in line with what was the average, that they're not gonna get that money because we're gonna keep people who are getting more than the average. More than the average. I just, I it's it's very difficult.
Yeah, we probably should have.
I mean, it's hard, but this is just when we're getting it and it it's there's people that aren't gonna be able to live with this pay. I mean, I know you want to answer right now. This is we shouldn't be doing this. It should be you doing it and but it it was a suggestion of that and and I would have liked to have seen some options where it wasn't this hard of a blow. And I mean, people don't have options to have another job, JJ. They can't. They're working here. The college allows you to do that because you can go to different jobs, but here you can't do that. You gotta work here from eight to five. You know, and so I mean, that is not an option. They're teachers. They're sitting in front of kids. So and they're they're riding a bus and things like that. So I mean,
I think so the motion was amended.
I'll second it.
I need, I need, I need direction.
So then we just made a vote, yeah?
Right, because the motion to um to table was amended by trustee Iniones and it was seconded by trustee Gonzalez with those specifications. Right?
Correct.
Ten percent down, ten percent up. So some people would think they're getting a raise, more of a raise will get less of a raise. People who think that they were getting more of a cut are getting less of a cut.
Okay, all in favor? I'll need of the motion made by trustee Iniones and it has been seconded by trustee Gonzalez.
All in favor? I'm gonna ask something really quick. Is there a better suggestion than what we're saying? Because I you are the expert. We are just trying to soften the blow in our community. And and I know Robert's suggestion is here, but this is, this is what we're trying to accomplish. And if you can make the suggestion, we can make the amendment right now and pass it, but you have to make the suggestion to us.
Yeah, I think that the suggestion could be with the uh pay increases. So when we bring a pay increase like, and and I know, I know I I know that our hands are tied. I mean, we would love to say seven percent and we would love to do something like that. I'd love it to be significant like that. I just know we don't have the money, so we we'd have to work through the numbers. So I I'll give an example, like the the bus monitor, like some of these that are lower pay, we, because right now I have them tiered. Like tier one are like, if we only have this last hundred thousand dollars, I would love it to all go to this to this group. So we can, we can do different percentages of pay raises, like significant pay raises to some of these lower paid who were uh who were impacted by these workdays. Uh we can look at um you know, I can look at the, I know that we want to move with the stipends. I mean, we eliminated a lot of stipends too. So some of them just because they you you know, they're they're not um they're not impactful to the bottom line or or they weren't necessary anymore. So when you say up ten percent, down ten percent, perhaps we can make an adjustment to some of those that we uh that are that were reduced quite a bit, but leave the ones that were eliminated because they just you know, don't work like, like maybe make a few tweaks, but but to not
What I, I mean, that's really what I want. I don't want to just completely say get rid of everything, you know, I I mean, I I value what you've done. I just don't want it to be this big of a blow and and so I I wanted I respect what Robert said too. I mean, I I do respect that and and trying to soften the blow, but I see your face and it's like confusing and I don't want to make it.
I I just think it's best to just give the best possible increase to all the staff that hasn't, that isn't a teacher right now. It is really the better way to go than to.
I mean, I'm really concerned about the special ed people. I really am. That's those, the list of people. Because like some of these people that have increased stipends by this large of amount have days that were reduced. And what some of them, I want to say it's welding is the one I saw. They they lost a lot of days. I don't know if it's a lot, but ten maybe. And then they got their seventy-five hundred or something like that in stipends. And so they kind of wash each other out. So I don't want to just impact the stipends because then they're really gonna lose if we take off their days. So there's, I know you worked equations in there and how you figured this out. The bottom line is the this employee and how much they're impacted. And I know you worked it out where you took off days and you gave them a stipend. I just don't want them to be impacted so much is is the key and and I don't know if everyone saw that in in this compensation plan, but that's what I understand, right? That's what you did on some of them. The the pay decreased by days because of the days and then we ended up giving them stipends.
And so way to pay them. That's the appropriate way to do it in those cases.
Yeah, like for the special ed, like I I'd love to sit down with you, like show you their last year's pay, what we're, what we were, the the new pay that we uh we gave them based on a equity audit and the the pay review. And then if you all do a a pay increase and approve that, I'd love, I I could show you what they may be making more. Some of these folks were making more once we we made the, we did the salary review. So some are making a little less, but not as, not as much as what it looks like on paper. So we were really diligent with all that. I mean, I'd be happy to sit down with you, go through, because we went through this with every single one of them.
Is there any way we can make an adjustment by the end of the week?
To to the I mean, yes, definitely.
To vote on it.
Why?
Because you have to post within seventy-two hours.
There's three of us will be gone and myself will be gone.
We're leaving.
They're all leaving.
Thursday.
Wednesday.
Of Wednesday, Thursday. So that would just be two or three of y'all.
And I don't know, I guess it could be Monday.
And I could quickly and easily make revisions to to the stipend document.
But we would have to, we would have to come back, have a meeting. And it's not gonna happen this week. So the motion is to increase, decrease by ten percent. With all the discussion and everything, um we need to vote on that motion. So all in favor of the motion?
Of tabling and until she, you know.
No, um you guys amended that and we did the um motion was made by trustee Iniones with the ten percent increase and the ten percent decrease. And it was seconded by you. Do you want to amend that?
And as for one clarifying question, the elimination, so can those stay eliminated or you're saying don't eliminate? Go ahead and keep those eliminated. It's just the the ones that went up and went down. Okay.
And and then we're not voting on four thousand and eight thousand either. Is that right? That's that's the
That's the state, yeah, that's, but I mean, it's the compensation plan.
I think if we're applying that to everything, that's gonna get way too crazy. So I don't know, good way to get out of this.
I know and and I'm, I know you're trying to do the vote. I'm sorry. I just don't want to vote for something that it's not feasible and and I think more than anything, the concern that we have is it's too big of a blow. And so um I I don't know if there's a way to make a vote on on that where we say um that that
Have to amend the motion.
And I just want to go off of Dr. Gutierrez because I, I mean, I I do believe, do you understand what we're trying to do? Um and so I just want to say, you know, maybe hate to make an amendment, um to to make an amendment to the vote to to your suggestion of that decrease or increase, that fluctuation of it. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know how you feel about that.
I mean, I mean, that can easily be done, going up ten percent, down ten percent versus what was recommended.
Yeah, I mean, that is, we just wanted to not have someone take a big hard hit. That's that's really what it was.
Yeah, we did.
We just need to know, like, if there are specific, I mean, I don't know. We we worked really hard for people not to take big hits. By the time the state comes through with the raise, if they're getting an eight thousand dollar raise, I mean, we did take all that into consideration. So we've heard all of the discussion. Would I want to, I mean, it might be simpler to either pass like vote on passing it as presented or not. And if you don't pass it as presented, then we know what direction to go.
I guess that's um I'll make a motion that we okay, the prayer.
She can, they can retract their motions.
So I'll make a motion to table the compensation plan.
Have to make a motion to approve it as presented and then vote on it. And if it doesn't, the vote doesn't carry, then she knows what direction to go.
I mean, I'll just table it. I think that's the motion. I'll make a motion to table the compensation plan.
Do I have a second to table this? Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to consider approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six compensation plan as presented.
Okay, Madam President, I'm gonna make a motion that we do approve the twenty-five, twenty-six compensation plan as presented.
Motion made by trustee Swadis, second by trustee Floris. All in favor? Need to vote for it.
So we know what direction to go. We've heard all of your conversation and we know what direction to go because that as opposed to y'all trying to figure it out here, like I just need to know from the board as a whole whether it, what y'all wanted. And so that gives me clear direction. So thank you. We we know what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eleven, items of division of administration and operation. Item eleven, items of division of administration and operations. Okay, all right, thank you. All right.
Thanks, Mika.
Agenda item twelve, consent agenda. A, minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Trustees held on June fourth, twenty twenty-five. B, minutes of the board workshop meeting of the Board of Trustees held on June ninth, twenty twenty-five. C, minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Trustees held on June twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. D, minutes of regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on June twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. Item E, item of information regarding maintenance and operations. Item F, item of information regarding transportation. Item G, item of information regarding SFE. Item H, item of information on the district's investment activity for June twenty twenty-five. Item I, item of information on the district's quarterly investment activity for June twenty twenty-five. J, item of information on the district's credit card activity for June twenty twenty-five. K, item of information for revenues and expedient, expenditures as of May twenty twenty-five. L, item of information on the tax collection activity for June twenty twenty-five. M, item of information for the district's federal program activity for May twenty twenty-five. N, consider approval of accounts payable checks for June twenty twenty-five. O, item of information, first reading of Tazby policies, CQ local, EFB local, and FNCE local. P, item of information, first reading of Tazby policy update one twenty-five. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Madam Board President, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion made by trustee Floris, second by trustee Quinones. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thirteen adjournment. I'll entertain a motion for an adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by trustee Riso, second by trustee Swadis. All in favor? The time now is eleven forty-eight. We are adjourned.